I think she is on her way. Thank you, Ms. Sanders. We've already called the meetings to order and we are now on a roll call. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Ms. Holman.
Here.
Mr. Bercham.
Here.
Ms. Crawford.
Here.
Dr. Chris Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Truman.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Ms. Simmons.
Here. All right, thank you. At this time, we will have Ms. Fitzsimmons and Mr. Pari, our school board members, read the Winchester Public Schools' belief statement and lead in the pledge of allegiance.
We believe that every student has the right to an excellent education in a safe, experiential, and imaginative learning environment. We believe that every student deserves equitable opportunities to learn, grow, lead, and serve. We believe that an intentional focus on future-ready skills and dispositions, integrated with essential academic knowledge, develops an empowered 21st century graduate. We believe that mental, emotional, and physical health are essential conditions for optimal learning. We believe that collective efficacy and shared accountability are vital ingredients to a productive, empowered workforce. We believe that Winchester Public Schools must be learner-centered, agile, and courageous in modeling the power of public education across our Commonwealth country and world. We believe that a vibrant public education system positively impacts the social, economic, and civic well-being of Winchester. We believe that embracing the diversity of our students, their families, and our community is a strength that unifies us. We believe that to achieve equity, we must clearly define and monitor the extent to which all learners and groups are empowered through access, diversity, and inclusion.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Pari and Ms. Fitzsimmons. Now moving on to item D on our agenda under one. I would like to just make a brief comment and just really, first of all, just thank my fellow board members. During my absence, they, of course, kept up. They didn't skip a meeting and just was continually committed to the whole hard work of Winchester Public Schools. And I specifically want to thank Miss Holman for just really operating in my stead and just really doing the hard work to share. A lot of people may not understand what time, the time commitment, and what it really takes to be in this role. So I just really wanted to say thank you so much, and I'm happy to be back. And moving on to superintendent's comments, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I want to start by saying thank you to our community for a very smooth day today. As you know, there's been a lot of social media chatter regarding a maskless Monday, but in true Winchester style, we simply went to school. And so I just want to say thank you to our community, to our administrators, our teachers for their professionalism, and our students who came to school without bus and simply hadn't had school. Everyone in our community is professional and civil. It is something that we should really be proud of in this community. We are back from a week of snow. Weather looks good for the remainder of the week, but I also want to take this time to recognize the teachers and their hard work in the virtual learning that happened throughout the snow days this past week. We're getting pretty good at the virtual learning. I'm very impressed with the engagement of teachers and students. And in particular, I've been impressed with our youngest students and our elementary teachers and how they engage our kids virtually. We're fortunate to have this modality during inclement weather. And finally, we do want to welcome back our board chair. You were ever-present in our thoughts over the last several months, and we're glad to see you back and healthy and look forward to a great remainder of the school year.
Thank you. Glad to be back. All right, moving on to board member comments. I'm going to start down here to my right with Dr. Chris Gonzalez.
Nothing necessarily new to say. I just wanted to echo Dr. Van Huglen's words earlier. Happy to have you back, Marie. This feels good to see your face back in these warm hands again. And again, I talked to my kids today. I've talked to Shayla here before the meeting started, and I just want to say thank you to our community as well for what seemed to be pretty a pretty hot and full Monday, as all things go. And I'm grateful that our little community is.
Thank you. Ms. Holman.
Welcome back, Madam Chair. It's great to have you back. I never want to have to handle the gavel again. I also want to say thank you to our community. You know, we want to keep schools open. Snow days are difficult. The days when children are sick are a lot rougher, not only for the children who are sick, but the parents who are caring for them and the classmates who are impacted. Today, I have the privilege of hanging out with my son's principal and Dr. Ray at Daniel Morgan Middle School. And all I saw were kids at the cane, ready to go to school, ready to have a great day. And, you know, parents who were smiling and waving. It's just what school is supposed to be about, making sure kids can come and have a safe learning environment, and that our teachers can also be safe as they teach our little ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Mrs. Truman. Mr. Bercham.
Ms. Crawford. Good evening. First, I would like to welcome and greet everyone with the word peace. First, I would like to welcome and greet everyone with the word peace. I ask that we approach this evening in agreement that we are all here for one purpose, to keep our schools open and safe. First and foremost, this is not a political arena, and we are not politicians, and we deserve respect. We are the Winchester City School Board, and our objective is to keep our schools open in a safe manner for all students and staff, and to provide the best education for your children. If you plan to speak tonight, I ask that you please refrain from Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, or TikTok dialogues. Please speak on the facts that are valid. The fact is that in the Valley Health system, on this past Friday, there were 155 COVID patients with ICU at 93%. We must address why we wore masks. I wore a mask to protect you, and hopefully you wore a mask to protect me. If a child wears a mask, that child is protecting your child from any particles that may extrude from their mouth during talking, laughing, sneezing, or coughing. But if your child does not wear a mask, anything that comes from their mouth can possibly spread through the air on deaths and even on children who are sitting near them. Would this mean extra cleaning for teachers between classes or extra sanitizing by custodians, which are already few in numbers? Would it be possible for parents who are against masks to volunteer to help clean our buildings? This discussion has been based on rights of parents. So are we only addressing the rights of some parents, of children, who could possibly infect the children of those who are trying desperately to do everything possible to keep their children safe from illness? If we had more room and more teachers, we could separate those who feel they are above this and will never contract COVID. But that is just not possible. We may have some children and teachers who are more susceptible to severe illness. So how do we protect everyone? Are they expected to stay home and not have access to in-person learning? Please help me understand the burden to your family to wear a mask to protect your loved ones, our school system, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Now we move on to comments from our senior board representatives. Ms. Fitzsimmons.
Well, at Hanley, the year and the second semester are off to a great start, and our teachers and administrators continue to be upbeat and energetic and inspirational in the classroom. Even on our virtual days, because we're inclement weather, they continue the curriculum and our learning and do our best to keep our motivation up. Most of my peers agree with the universal masking, so I'm thankful for the decision that the board has made to continue this, because it's really important that we keep our students and faculty and staff, their families, and the hospital and the community safe. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzsimmons. Mr. Pari.
I wanted to make a comment after all the talks surrounding the mask mandates these past few days. With all the information about how effective or ineffective masks are themselves, it's easier to, it's easy to lose sight of the bigger picture. Currently, Winchester Medical Center has 108 COVID patients hospitalized in a 495-bed hospital. I want to share the recent experiences of a close friend of mine who works at Valley Health. They preferred that I leave their name out, but like myself, they are a senior at John Hanley High School and have seen firsthand the worst of how COVID is affecting our community currently. Here's what they had to say. With the new Omicron variant, a lot of people think that the severity of COVID-19 is lessening. This is not true. Yes, the death rate has not seen an increase, but the number of infections has, and the hospitals are still overwhelmed. As of last week, Winchester Medical Center opened its fourth major COVID-19 unit. Over 100 beds are being used in reserves for COVID-19 patients. Not only does this put more pressure on the hospital staff, but it takes away resources from other patients. The most recent COVID-19 unit that was opened was originally the orthopedics unit. Dozens of other patients with COVID-19 wait in the emergency department rooms for days for an open bed. This has increased wait times and has made it difficult to be seen by a health professional for a non-COVID emergency. While I'm working there, I'm in charge of supplying the second-largest unit in Five West. Five West houses 40 beds, which are all reserved for COVID-19 patients. While walking by those beds in the past few weeks, I continue to hear patients crying and screaming for help. I delivered many shrouds indicating that a patient has passed. I've rode on elevators with nurse technicians wheeling around deceased patients that died from COVID-19. In my department, we've been short-staffed for several months, with many of my coworkers feeling burnt out and having to come in extra days to make up for shortages. It's safe to say that the hospital's not a place that anyone wants to be in if it can be avoided. Masking up is the easiest way to do exactly this, and I believe that continuing the school mask mandate is an unnecessary step in slowing the spread and reducing the burden on the hospital. And that's the end of what they shared with me. If any of you find masks unpleasant, I empathize with you. I think it is safe to say that most of us are counting the days until things are truly normal again. But today is not that day, not while our fellow community members are still on ventilators or stuck in hospital hallways on gurneys, and not when the WMCIC was almost at 100% capacity and continuing to open up new COVID units. Even though I look forward to the day that we can take them off, I applaud our school board for outlining the mask requirement in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pari, for that information, and thank you for sharing the story from your peer. I think that really is impactful and really gives us additional insight to what's happening in our community. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to move on in our agenda to item number two, where we recognize a school within Winchester Public Schools every month. And so tonight, we have the privilege of having John Hanley High School showcase. Ms. Cablan.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, school board members. Good evening to our community. Just want to second what you all have shared with us about how great our school system is to continue with the universal masking. This is, when I hear, I'm very proud of my students here. When I hear our students saying that, it brings a lot of joy to my heart, because I'm very, very proud of them of understanding what the stakes are. So thank you very much for your comments. Tonight, I'm very, very proud of a project that we've been working on last semester, and I'm very excited to showcase it tonight and to introduce a team member who've been working very, very tirelessly with a group of educators who are trying to put together a support system for our students. As you know, John Hanley has a lot that we need to improve upon, and this is one of the areas that we, as a team at John Hanley High School, think that the success center is a way to improve our students' achievement scores and our students' social and emotional learning. So I'm very, very proud of the work that the team has been working on. With us tonight is Jackie Penn. I'm very proud of introducing her to you. She is the secondary MTSS specialist. She has, since she was hired, working with a team of educators to put together a success center. She's going to share with you the vision for the success center, the mission for the success center, and the data behind putting together the success center. These are research-based and putting it together with the goal of improving student scores, improving student attendance. When we talk later about the MTSS, you will see that the MTSS is a very complex process, and it needs to be brought together so the different silos in John Hanley can come together in a comprehensive plan, in a comprehensive procedure, where we can address our students' needs. So I'm very, very proud to have Jackie Penn. She's going to share with you.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to share a little bit about some of the work we've done at John Hanley High School. So essentially, we started with a team of educators, school counselors, administration, school psychologists, diagnostician, as well as the interventionist at John Hanley and myself as the division specialist. And as a team, we began to problem-solve around the areas that we saw kids had needs. And we wanted to provide some layers of support. So on top of the core tier-one instruction that they receive, we found that some kids were still having academic deficits that we wanted to address. And sometimes those academic deficits were rooted in possibly behavior or attendance or social-emotional needs. So we wanted to make sure we created a space that met all of their needs as a whole student, which kind of birthed the idea of a student success center. So if I could just briefly take you on a mental tour of what that looks like. I know you guys visited John Hanley and you saw the student success room kind of in its infancy and will continue to grow and develop that space into something that supports students again in a social and emotional way as well as an academic way. And so at this time, we have a room or a space that's dedicated solely to students who are in need of higher-level support. So we have an interventionist that is a licensed teacher who works with students who may have reading or math deficits and/or organizational needs of a severe nature, not necessarily specialized education levels, but still enough to warrant putting them with an interventionist on kind of a one-on-one kind of scale. And then also adjacent to that space is our success room, which serves the needs of students who aren't as high-needs as the students that work with an interventionist. These students may need a space to make up work, work on their edenility coursework, and even we have intentions of kind of evolving it into a space where they could get SOL remediation, so those moderate academic needs. But again, these are students who we feel would benefit greatly from a space that's more geared towards their social and emotional needs as well. And then, I'll let Mr. Ray talk a little bit more about this, but inclusive of that center approach is the ISR room, which should be of a therapeutic nature. And we want this whole space, which was formerly the tech center downstairs. So we utilized and repurposed this space for this effort around the student success center to help kids who needed those additional layers of support. Yes. So the student success room is manned or staffed by extended support team staff, which facilitate the learning and support students in a fairly gentle way as needed. They just know that someone's there to assist them when they need assistance, and that's funded through the ASPIRE grant. And also, we have two currently, and we have two more hopefully on the way.
Good evening. As we were implementing NTSS, and also there's an overlay with the ASPIRE grant, what we extended school year grant that we want to achieve there. So we had positions for the extended school year grant that dovetailed nicely with the work we were doing in the student success center as part of our NTSS implementation. What we found is that students who need that extra intervention because they're not on grade level with reading or math, or students who are just sort of overwhelmed and need academic support, keeping up with their classes like Jackie mentioned, but also some of these students also have behavioral needs. And when they come to us, it's sort of a bundle of issues we have to unpack. So when it's fully implemented, we envision some of the, we call them EST, extended school, excuse me, extended support team assistants. It's a TA position. In some cases, they'll be working on academic support. So the typical model where you'd see a student working on either a computer program or one-on-one with a teacher, getting organized, completing work, et cetera, doing that academic work. And the behavioral support is going to come twofold. If you remember, a number of years ago, I took a ISS modeling, school suspension model, which was more of an academic or even punitive model, and we created a more therapeutic model, which had a reflective, reflecting, what was the behavior or choice I made to get me in here? And then, how can I return to the classroom, restore, fresh start with the teacher? So we're trying to make this ISR room an integral part of the student success center. The other piece is that we've also found that research shows that when students go through the discipline process, even the toughest exterior kids, it's traumatic. Sometimes they feel targeted. I didn't do it. Nobody's listening to me. And on the tail end, when given a logical consequence, are still trying to process like, and sometimes it takes a lot of administrative time to, why they still sort of reflect on, this isn't fair, you know, or I wish I didn't do it, all kinds of outcomes afterwards. And we can't just meet out discipline. You know, I got a report that you did this. Because you did this, I investigated. I think it's true. Here's the consequence. That needs to happen. But at the same time, there needs to be a reflective, let's think about the choices you made, some better choices you could have made. How can you have a fresh start the next day? How can you make amends with the teacher? What's your return-to-class plan? That we typically just, it's a lot to do. And just to give you an idea, if an administrator sends for a student and you're a student, you know what it's for, it could take you a lot of time to walk to the office. You're going to take, sort of take your time. And when you get there, there's sort of that investigative piece and the meeting out of the discipline. And then I found many times, the students, even if they're angry, they really want to interact with the adult. They want to process through it. And if you have numerous discipline referrals or processing, it takes a lot of, if the administrator really wants to provide that social-emotional approach, it takes a lot of time. So the other way in which we're going to use the ESTs is for direct support of students. So an administrator may say to the EST, "Mr. Smith, will you go get Johnny and bring him to me?" So there can be a dialogue on the way and sort of coach the student. Am I in trouble? I didn't do anything wrong. Just say, well, then you just need to, you know, tell what happened and just sort of support the student, advocate for how they can sort of tell their side. Additionally, on the tail end, when I need to say, "Okay, Carmen, are you ready? Go back to your next class and need to talk through it," there's that adult that's sort of neutral that can do that with them, and the administrator can move on to some other issues. We have some students who it's their first time having a referral, and it's traumatic because it's their first time. And we have some students that, at Hanley, I've even interacted multiple times, that just have a really hard time with choosing good behaviors and then accepting the consequences and moving on in a mature manner. So on any given day, our ESTs may be providing academic support or behavioral support for students, and that sort of encompasses this idea of it's a student success center. If you need help, social-emotional help because of a behavior or a decision you made, or if you're overwhelmed by just the amount of instruction, or you miss school, or if you need help because you're on a fifth-grade reading level and you're in ninth grade, that center is providing all that support, and we feel like it's a really great, like sort of a hub for our MTSS model.
Just want to follow up. This success center came from the data we collected last year, the data we continue to collect this year. You will see later on when we do our school improvement plan is this is all coming together. The MTSS, the PPIS that we do at school, the intervention that teachers do on their own. So all of this is coming together as part of our school improvement plan, and we can share with you later on the process that we do take when we assign students, how do we identify them. So you will see the details of the success center. But it's a very, very good program. I'm hoping that we will see the benefits once we start utilizing it. We just opened today. So today is our first day. The whole first semester, we've been working, meeting, and working on, how does it look like? Who's going to be involved? How we're going to put it together? How do we identify students? So it's a lot of work went into putting the success center together. I'm very happy that we can utilize the downstairs, the basement, with the opening of the Innovation Center. So we're utilizing the space, and hopefully this, you know, semester, we will see good results. Part of it will be reducing, you know, the referral, you know, for students, being proactive and dealing with students instead of reactive and punishing students. So I'm very excited, and I want to just thank Mr. Ray for his support for the program, and hopefully you will get to see it. And I think we had two school members who came and visited with us. The work that you've seen when you came to visit is progressing now, and the space looked very, very nice. So hopefully we'll continue to improve that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cablan. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for any comments or questions from our school board members for Ms. Cablan or Jackie or Mr. Ray. I'll start here.
I do have a question. Now, is Jackie unique to John Hanley, or do you work with the whole division?
Currently, I work with secondary schools on the MTSS aspect of things, and we are expanding my role to include PBS K through 12.
Okay, so I remember the presentation to the board when we were discussing about MTSS. What does it look like? So we've got interventionists at each of the schools, and then the layer up, and then the layer up is?
Yes, ma'am. So essentially, when Mrs. Cablan gives her presentation, it includes the MTSS model and how we are using our team as a hub to problem-solve around the areas that we're finding students need support. So it's using existing resources and organizing our efforts so that we can utilize those supports and resources to conduit to kids. If there's something that we're finding is not in place or there's a need for it, then we will start to problem-solve around how can we put something in place to meet the needs of students.
I'm just a little excited, so I'll wait for the presentation.
Glad to hear that.
Glad to hear that. Please feel free later on when we discuss the school improvement, part of the school improvement. improvement is talking about the success center and how we utilize the MTSS process. So please ask questions later on if you need.
Ms. Crawford? I just have one question for a point of clarification. Mr. Ray, you were talking about the interactions with the students in the success centers, and you mentioned the word neutral. Does that mean that those interactions are, there's no overlap, so whoever's in the success center, they do not have another interaction with a student in a different capacity?
Yes, they would.
They would?
So, for instance, let's say I'm working with Brian, getting an intervention. And then I find out that Brian made a poor choice, and is going to be in ISR the next day. We want to, we want our ESTs, our interventionists, to go into the ISR room and say, "Hey, Brian, this is what we were working on yesterday, how's it going?" And Brian may say, "I had a really good talk with the ISS person, and I'm going to make better decisions." So they see, all of these adults are, you know, I may be a direct IST with Carmen one day, another day I'm for academic intervention. So we, the MTSS is about the whole child, and so our, we wouldn't have staff numbers being in isolated roles. We want to see that, "Hey, I can help you with social emotional, I can help you with understanding expectations, I can help you with reading or math, I can help you just get organized." MTSS is about resources for all kids, and with high standards that we want them all to be successful.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure in terms of, I don't know how we measure neutral, right? Especially if we have students that are interfacing with teachers in different roles. I'm just, I would just be concerned about, what does that look like, and how do we know that it's neutral? How are we measuring that neutrality? So maybe that's a topic for discussion later, but I just.
I understand what you're saying. The, I'll give you an example from my experience as a principal. We had, which you're very familiar with, day treatment workers, who, when the students they worked with would interact with me as an administrator, they would do prompts like, "Hold on, just listen to what Mr. Ray's saying," and, or say, "Can I help explain what Karen's trying to say?" So it's neutral in terms of maybe helping explain what Mr. Ray's saying to Brian, and helping Brian understand what Mr. Ray's saying to him. And offering, "Can Brian and I take a walk? He'll come back because I don't think he's going to be able to, he's out of a place where he's going to be able to listen well." And administrators, you know, some of those little breaks we need, they don't have the time and all the things they have to do. So when I got day treatment as a principal, it was such a, you know, what could have been a referral, they say, "Brian, we're just taking a walk," and talking about, "We're good, Mr. Ray, we don't need you. I'll bring him back when he's ready to discuss this maturely." So that's sort of, they have an adult that the student goes relationship with, and they feel like they can trust them, and they'll help them navigate that, which is, like I said, is traumatic to, "What's going to happen to me? I'm in trouble, I didn't do it, I feel like my side is getting out." So that sort of neutrality is what I'm speaking to, that sort of model.
Thank you for extending that further.
And I can expand on this. With, with the work that we do in the success center, usually the interaction with those students are very neutral because they have no discipline in the mix. These people who will be working with the students usually are not, not involved in the infraction that took place between the teacher and the student, and at the same time, they are not the disciplinary. So they're very neutral. They bring the students, they talk about what happened, and they hear their story, and then they provide, you know, that support for the students that sometimes feel, you know, targeted, or feel blamed, or, so they're not part of the infraction, and they're not part of the disciplinary. So that's where the neutrality comes.
And one other thing I'm really proud of that I would add, is we typically don't provide a whole lot of professional development for classified personnel. So I was personally involved in training ESTs along with this ten, and so we actually practiced de-escalation skills. We practiced scripting of, if a student says, asks, you know, how can, you know, instead of saying, "What did you do?", "Murray, tell me what happened." And little subtle things like that, you get a whole different outcome. So, but instead of saying, "You're going with this kid to the office and help him," we're providing job embedded professional development to improve our skills at interacting with students and making them feel that they have support at school.
Yeah, thank you for including that, and I hope that that's something that later, if this stays in place, that we can standardize, because I think it's important that every person that's working in the success center is really kind of delivering the same kind of model. So I think that's great that you guys are, you know, affording that opportunity for learning to the staff that are there.
Thank you. No other questions or comments? We are now to. Our present agenda.
At this time, I will entertain an adoption of our. Sorry, we are at public comment. So this evening, we do have several that have asked to speak before the board, and we also have several that have sent in their comments via email or some other electronic way. What we'll do this evening is, we will go ahead and start with the written comments, and Ms. Herman and I will split those. I will remind everyone that we will be strongly adherent to the three minutes, whether it's written or in person. Normally, you know, just based on how many people we have here, we may give some allowances for you to continue your thought tonight. I am going to ask you to please, at that three-minute mark, complete your sentence, and then we'll move to the next person. All right, so we'll begin here with our first one. Our first submitted written comment is from Mr. Jeff Keller, and he is at 215 Kenlock Lane. "I am writing to express my gratitude for the courage displayed by the Winchester Public Schools school board in upholding our practice of universal masking. While we all look forward to the day when we can be rid of face masks, the fact is, this is not that day. Thank you for protecting our staff and students, for listening to our medical experts, both nationally and at the community level, and for prioritizing health and safety over politics. Your actions help us both stay safe and keep our schools open, a top priority for every educator in our community." Next, we have Amanda Dodge at 337 Virginia Avenue. "It is critical to the health and safety of our students, teachers, staff, and community that Winchester Public Schools continue to enforce a mask mandate in school buildings. Removing the mask mandate is not compatible with keeping our schools open for in-person learning." Next, we have Connie Batton, 706 South Cameron. "Mask wearing simply should not be an issue in political avenues. Unfortunately, some of our political leaders at state and federal levels have incited this politicized conflict in our community. As a city who cares about our children and stands by proven science, we need to maintain our common sense and keep the mask mandate in place for our school system. This, this, this decision should not be about who boasts his or her political stance. This decision should be about what is best for the health and safety of our students. Our children do not have the authority to make wise choices for themselves. It is our responsibility as adults to always make decisions based on their welfare. This is an obvious one. Listen to Valley Health, listen to science. Keep the mask mandate until COVID numbers no longer indicate this necessity. This will allow us to keep kids in school while also keeping them safe. Without the mask mandate, I fear a soar in COVID numbers resulting in the shutting down of many schools due to the staffing shortages. That benefits no one." Next, we have Ari Sommer, 115 North Washington Street. "I have already written to Superintendent Van Heuvel to register my strong support for the continued mask mandate in the Winchester Public Schools, and to thank him for his leadership in this area. He suggested that I also let you know about this support. My daughter attends Winchester Public School in the first grade and has had a remarkably smooth year back in person, all things considered. This has only been possible for our family because of the strong adherence to evidence-based recommendations regarding children's safety, and we are proud to live in Winchester for that reason. The minor discomfort of wearing masks has seemed to be inconsequential to my daughter and her friends and classmates, and we are grateful that she has been able to attend classes in person in a way that does not compromise her health and well-being. Again, thank you for the, thank you for helping parents keep their children safe and not letting the loudest voices interfere with what appears to be the best decision for health, safety, and welfare of the community." Next, we have Joanne Rinker, 508 Thorpe View Street. "I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you. Thank you for putting the safety and health of our children, teachers, and staff above all. I don't envy the pressure you are under. I wish all of you a sense of peace knowing you are doing the right thing and protecting our kids. Making the right choice is not always the easiest choice. Our kids, young adults, and future leaders are watching. Respect to each of you." Next up, we have John Henkel at 1629 Handley Avenue. "We support the governor's decision on optional masking for our children at school. Please do the right thing and support his decision as well. Thank you."
Next is from Brandy Shirley, 1530 Middle Fork Road. "I was forced to sign a consent form against my will with the threat of losing my job. I was hounded and harassed with email after email prior to the day of testing. Once signed, I continued to get emails. Had I known I didn't have to sign, I never would have signed. Testing does not lend an immediate result. Samples are set off. Should there be a positive case, the results will show too late. Out of the testing thus far, how many positive cases as a result? If testing is required, all staff and students should be tested, as those vaccinated are carrying the virus as well. Preventative action five on the VDH website explains the importance of screening, testing, and testing to stay. The Vista portion of the VDH website states the following. All testing is voluntary. Testing will be voluntary for students and staff at participating schools. Only individuals who return completed consent forms may be tested. How does this align with the current WPS testing policy, which currently requires testing if you do not share your vaccination status, rather than making, than make testing voluntary? The updated interim guidance on the VDH explains it should be offered, page eight. This aligns with the voluntary language on the Vista of the VDH website. The screen testing for preventative action suggests that transmission factors and particular outbreak should be considered as well. In the transmission situation at DMMS in early January, unvaccinated teachers were not the cause based on internal data, since there were so many breakthrough cases which seem relevant to the model WPS uses in this particular school, potentially the district. Are you taking this into account and adjusting the screening program accordingly based on VDH guidelines? One simply cannot cherry pick the mandates and guidelines to adhere to and ignore the others." Delia Delgado, 715 National Avenue, 22601. "As a teacher, I support a universal mask mandate at WPS to keep as many students and staff in school and in person as possible. In addition to COVID possibly spreading more easily through our schools without masks, looking at the COVID quarantine procedures, it is clear that if students do not wear masks, then more students and staff will have to quarantine if there is an exposure at school. This will lead to more students having to participate in distance learning. In my experience, many students do not or cannot complete schoolwork while distance learning in quarantine and fall behind. This results in learning loss for students and extra stress for teachers and students alike." Mindy Adams, 152 Hudson Avenue. "A number of staff are not opposed to testing, but are opposed to signing a consent form stating, 'I understand that authorizing COVID-19 testing is optional, and that I can refuse to give this authorization, in which case I will not be tested. This is not reflective of the options we are provided to test, provide our health information, or be placed on leave. Can the consent form be updated to reflect the circumstances under which we are actually providing consent?'" Christina Fortune, 167 Severna Parkway, Martinsburg, West Virginia. "One, preventative action five on the VDH website explains the importance of screening, testing, and testing to stay. The Vista portion of the VDH website states the following. All testing is voluntary. Testing will be voluntary for students and staff at participating schools. Only individuals who return completed consent forms may be tested. How does this align with the current WPS testing policy, which currently requires testing if you do not share your vaccination status, rather than making it voluntary? The updated interim guidance on the VDH explains it should be offered, page eight. This aligns with the voluntary language on the Vista of the VDH website. The screen testing for preventative action suggests that transmission factors and particular outbreaks should be considered as well. In the transmission situation at DMMS in early January, unvaccinated teachers were not the cause based on internal data, since there were so many breakthrough cases which seem relevant to the model WPS uses in particular, in this particular school, potentially the district. Are you taking this into account and adjusting the screening program accordingly based on the VDH guidelines? The current HR policy appears to be outdated, see December 2021, and somewhat confusing. At this point, it lacks clarification with the phrase "unable to work" by not stating who qualifies for this. According to the VDH preventative action two, the updated guidelines suggest the following. Allow flexible, non-punitive, and supportive-based sick leave policies and encourage sick workers to stay home. Interim guidance for COVID-19 prevention in Virginia, pre-K through 12 schools, page five. Some of the WPS staff cannot get vaccinated per the recommendation of their doctors because of certain health complications. Others have religious exemptions, and some individuals simply do not want to share their vaccination status. At this time, the WPS policy does clarify whether this benefit policy is for all staff, which consequently makes it inflexible and punitive if it's utilized in the same capacity as it was last year, only for employees who reveal their vaccination status. The updated VDH guidelines state, aside from vaccination and preventative action two, it suggests that action step for sick workers. The VDH does not differentiate between vaccinated workers and preventative action two, although it does strongly recommend the vaccine. According to this update, the current WPS benefit policy lacks thematic clarity, as for who gets 10 days of additional leave. Does the phrase "unable to work" in your policy include any employees sick with COVID at WPS or just vaccinated employees sick with COVID? Will this policy be updated with clarifying language? Three, will HR be getting additional training over handling the medical privacy of employees after what occurred on Tuesday, January 26th? Twenty-second? When 200-plus contact.
I told you you can go ahead and finish that sentence. 200-plus. Who are being tested weekly here, or CCs rather than BCCs in the email. Thank you.
Next, we have Shane Campbell, 3026 Aratoga Drive. "As a society, we have achieved much these past two years. One of those achievements is that we have successfully navigated our way through a pandemic and minimized the number of those affected by COVID. As time has gone on, we are seeing the virus mutate into different forms. The latest Omicron variant is highly contagious, but if you are vaccinated, way less pathogenic. So we are now asking ourselves, when do we start allowing more risk in our lives? The biggest of which deals with masks. Just as everything that has been in this pandemic, masks are a game of probability and long-run averages. In school, me wearing my mask does not guarantee my safety from getting COVID. It maximizes the probability I will not give COVID to someone else, if I have it but do not know it. I will go as far as to say that I was given the choice to not wear a mask, and I chose not to. I would not be showing my proudness of accepting a higher risk than anyone else. I would be conveying the lack of empathy I have towards everyone else and their families in the room. So for now, I choose to mask everywhere I go, not out of fear, but out of compassion for everyone else." Next, we have Laura Baker, Anderson or Anderly? Laura Baker Anderson at 241 Bush Drive, Winchester. "I would like to thank the school board for continuing the mask requirements for our students and staff. Relaxing this requirement at this time would not be prudent and would go directly against what the CDC and health professionals know to be true, mask work." As a teacher. As a teacher and a parent in Winchester Public Schools, I feel safer knowing the people around my child and around me are masked. Thank you for your continued diligence to keep the students and staff at Winchester Public Schools safe. Next, we have Anne Bancauto, 206 Cresswood Lane, Winchester. I am asking the board to maintain universal masking in all of our schools. Based on widespread scientific consensus, mask wearing is a proven strategy that will keep students and staff healthy, safe and in our buildings. Crystal Gage, 148 Emmett Street. Last year on New Year's Eve, my mom came to visit me, so we had a small get together for the holiday. When my mom woke up on New Year's Day, she had a fever and immediately packed her things to leave and get a COVID test. Unfortunately, it was too late. She and all of the folks who were in our home that the night before had COVID, including her husband, who died on a ventilator just over a month later. How did my mom get COVID? She worked in a pharmacy and refused to wear a mask. Can you imagine the guilt with, with she is slaving? Knowing that had she worn a simple piece of fabric, her husband would still be alive. And would you wish that same guilt on our students who go home to their loved ones and potentially expose them to the virus each day? To date, WPS has done an outstanding job keeping our students in school and for some of our students that has made a world of difference, whether that means learning better or having a hot meal for lunch. This is in large part due to our diligence in upholding a universal masking policy. While vaccinations and boosters are mitigating COVID with, from spreading to some degree, the presentation of new variants has shown us that they cannot stop it altogether. This is where masking comes into play. We all hate wearing masks, but there, but there are scientific studies to show that masking reduces the spread of this virus and others too. As a school, our first priority is to keep our children as safe as possible. Our second priority is to support our community, including the families of those same children. And our final priority is to keep our staff and faculty safe so they can help the schools achieve the first two priorities. Wear a mask, though not fail safe, is allowing us to do that with little inconvenience to our students and their families. To remove this policy simply because some kids don't want to wear masks seems foolish and irresponsible. So we must hold the line and do what is best for everyone in our community. Next, we have Grammy Wright, 311 Jefferson Street. Fully support mask mandate in schools. As are many things in life, it is a simple step to avoid other complications. Lauren Gaynor, 713 South Stewart Street, Winchester, Virginia, 22601. Students and staff need to continue wearing masks, not only for safety of those in the school building, but also for the safety of family members at home and others with whom they are in contact in the community. I personally know people who have unknowingly contracted COVID-19 while not wearing a mask and spread it to their elderly parents who have died from the bear, from the virus. The fact is that we have many unvaccinated children in Winchester Public Schools. Most of these children are unable to make their own choice about being vaccinated. Their parents make it for them. In the past two years, I have taught over 100 students. I can only recall one student being difficult about having to wear masks. However, there have been many students have talked about their difficulty with trying to learn virtually. The depression, despair and frustration they have felt not being in school with friends and adults who care about them. I have also observed how the impact of the virus not wearing masks, not mask wearing, has led to a decrease in socialization, decline in behavior and lack of academic growth for our students. Because masks help keep everyone safe and allows to go about the business of teaching children in person, there should be no deliberation. Mask wearing must continue.
Shannon Sale, 2513 Stone Ridge Road. So many of us have, so many of us have continued concerns regarding WPS's testing protocols, the lack of privacy associated with them and the disparity between those providing proof of vaccination and those who do not. Being subjected to a dual class system that provides no legitimate assurances of privacy based on the short term history we have to have with the program does not have a positive impact on morale. Essentially, you are marginalizing those who wish to stand up for their own health-related best interests. You are also penalizing people for not informing you of their private healthcare information by denying them paid leave that you have provided to other employees and practice several of us find discriminatory. As a whole, WPS struggles to find qualified individuals to cover classrooms when their staff is out. This only adds another level to which people will not want to be involved with the education system. Julie Foster, 401 Beach Cox Road. Hello, I would like to speak in favor of continuing our current mask policy at this time. Like many students and coworkers, I do not like wearing a mask. But I believe that as long as the CDC recommends wearing them as a deterrent to the spread of COVID, it is a wise policy. Some of my classes have 24 students and that puts us all in a very close quarters. I believe at this point in time, it's better to err on the side of caution. Thank you. Julie Foster, teacher, John Hamley High School. Sherry Putnam, 311 Ridge Avenue. As an educator at WPS and a resident of Winchester, I strongly support the WPS school board's continuing reinforcement of the mask mandate. Masks are worn not only as a protection to the health of the wearer, but also for the protection and health of those around you. As the sole caregiver of my elderly parents who both have numerous risk factors, I would not feel comfortable being in a school setting where students and staff members do not wear masks. It seems illogical to remove the mask mandate during the current surge in COVID-19 cases in our community. We have been wearing masks now for two years. No one likes it, but is it really such a big deal? It is selfish to only consider one's own risk and make a conscious decision to put the lives of others in danger by not masking up in public places where social distancing is not possible. Please look at the bigger picture. Science shows that the vaccine is only slightly effective in severely immunocompromised individuals like my mother. I, I need to do whatever I can to reduce her risk of being COVID-19. These are the types of people for whom we wear masks. Please, everyone, just do your part, at least until the surge is over. Amy Brumbach, 108 Rosemont Circle. I find it absolutely appalling that my medical privacy was infringed upon many levels and at various times. Mr. Joyner sent an email infringing on my right to privacy disclosing my name as an unvaccinated employee. Also, the testing experience was not private. There were multiple students at the open door of the test center saying, "Ms. Brumbach's got the COVID. Stay away from Ms. Brumbach." I documented this to Ms. Buckley and I have several witnesses. How awful to impose this onto someone and to do so in this fashion. Caitlin Ethelberger, 1705 Reeves Street. I do not believe that the governor was correct in his executive order when he claimed that students do not wear masks correctly, so they do not work. I believe our resilient students have done a great job of wearing masks consistently and correctly, and this has created an environment where we have been able to safely return to 100% five days a week. I believe that the CDC has been conservative and practical with their protocols for schools and school age children. Healthcare professionals and scientists around the world continue to affirm the efficacy of masks in preventing transmission, particularly in places where social distancing is not possible, like a classroom. I think it is our responsibility as educators and adults responsible for the wellbeing of children to follow the guidelines and recommendations of these hardworking scientists and healthcare professionals who have worked tirelessly studying this disease and caring for patients affected by it without political agenda. I think it is imprudent and unethical to discontinue any practices which follow CDC recommendations at a time when COVID is spreading rampantly in our community and while our healthcare system is carrying this great burden. I know that everyone in our community is tired of the continued burden that this pandemic has placed on all of us, but I believe we need to continue to put faith in the institutions that protect and educate us. We need to do this so that we can continue to be an institution in which our community can have the faith that we will protect and educate its children. Thomas Sager, 123 Penderbrook Court. Thank you for providing the opportunity for public comment. I am an 18-year educator with Winchester Public Schools. I appreciate your willingness to listen to the voices of those employed with Winchester Public Schools and your constituents. I wish to state for the public record that I am in full support of Governor Youngkin's recent executive orders and executive directives. These important and long overdue executive actions protect and reinforce both Virginia Commonwealth and United States constitutional rights to civil liberties. I fully support parent choice with regards to whether or not their child wears a mask in school. I only ask that each parent do their due diligence and use common sense when navigating the often mired landscape, landscape of COVID-19 news, information and facts. Then weigh both positive and negative potential outcomes of masks, discuss those potentials with their children, and as a family, choose what's best for you and your family while respecting the free will choices of others. Further, some points and questions. One, preventative action five on the VDH website explains the importance of screening, testing and testing to stay. The Vista portion of the VDH website states the following. All testing is voluntary. Testing will be voluntary for students and staff at participating schools. Only individuals who return completed consent forms may be tested. How does this align with the current WPS testing policy, which currently requires testing if you do not share your vaccination status, rather than making testing voluntary? The updated interim guidance on the VDH explains it should be offered, page eight. This aligns with the voluntary action on the Vista of the VDH website. The screen testing for preventative actions suggests that transmission factors and particular outbreaks should be considered as well. In the transmission situation at the DMMS in early January, unvaccinated teachers were not the cause based on internal data, since there were so many breakthrough cases which seem relevant to the model WPS uses in this particular school, potentially the district. Are you taking this into account and adjusting the screening program accordingly based on the VDH guidelines? Two, my next inquiry is related to air quality, and this looks like an opportunity for a CDC-focused bipartisanship relates to COVID, additionally PBL exclamation point. How is WPS currently complying in their buildings with the CDC guidelines for ventilation in schools? Three, the current HR policy appears to be outdated, see December 2021, and somewhat confusing. At this point, it lacks clarification with the phrase unable to work by not stating who qualifies for this. According to VDH preventative action two, the updated guidelines suggest the following. Allow flexible, nonpunitive and supportive pay sick leave policies that encourage sick workers to stay home. Interim guidance for COVID-19 prevention in Virginia, pre-K through 12 schools, page five. Some of the WPS staff cannot get vaccinated per the recommendations of their doctors because of certain health complications. Others have religious exemptions and some individuals simply do not want to share their vaccination status, period.
All right, thank you. That concludes our online submission. I do understand that we have some here in public that would like to address the school board right now. Secretary, I think I have three.
Yes.
Okay, yes, so first I'll call up Victoria Mann. Once you get to the podium, please remember the three-minute limitation and state your name and address, please.
Hi there, my name is Victoria Mason. I live at 2072 Taylor Grace Court. I came speech in hand, ready to go. However, I'm not going to speak on that today. I heard everyone's intro remarks, which all hold value, but please know that that is not inclusive of the whole community.
Ms. Mann, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I get you to pull your mask up over your nose, please?
I'm sorry, I think it keeps falling as I'm talking.
Yep, that's okay. Thank you.
And also, I want to comment on Mrs. Wallace's speech today, that I was actually disheartened by it because I feel like it was demeaning to people who hold opposition viewpoints in connection to your personal views, and that is saddening to me. I think this is something, well, I will say, I stand here as a parent who feels defeated, who feels heartbroken, who feels sad that our children, and might I say, I feel like I'm standing here representing a lot of parents. I have spoken to a lot of parents, I have had heartfelt conversations, and we are all in consensus that we are sad that our children are pawns in a societal pressure to wear masks, thinking it gives a false sense of security. Let's talk about reality. When you go into an elementary school, what do you see? You see majority of kids not wearing masks correctly, having it under their nose, which mine keeps falling, having it, you know, taken off, touching with dirty hands, having it in their mouth. My child comes home consistently every day with a soaked and wet mask. So I keep hearing repeatedly, "Thank you for wearing masks. What's the big deal about wearing masks?" Well, that's a big deal. Now her mask is compromised and it is now dirty, it is now laden with bacteria, possible other viruses, parasites. That is what she is subjected to wearing all day long, and that is not okay. So now you are posing another threat onto my child, as to many other children who are in elementary schools. People are not wearing masks correctly in schools, and I think we need to be real and talk about that. It is not a source of intervention of preventing COVID. That is just the reality of things. There is a school that is less than seven miles from here in Steeman City that has never required masks from the beginning of the pandemic. They had never shut down, they have never had mask quarantines, they have never had interruptions in their academic and social learning for their students. Why is that not looked at? Why is that not talked about? Why, why do we just think a mask is the solution to everything? It is not. It is impairing our children, and that needs to be talked about. So that is my words today, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Next up, we have Grace Haiti. Ody, okay.
Good evening. I think what I'm going to read, you're all going to have heard already, but I'll try to get through it quickly. I realize that Omicron is real. I realize it's aggressive and it's something we need to consider, so just that we approach it from all angles is like super important for me. So I just have medical privacy by main thing, so I just want to just read through this. It's going to sound like a summary. I'm going to be that teacher going on at the end of the lesson type thing, but okay. Preventative action five on the VDH website explains the importance of screening, testing and testing to stay. The Vista portion of the VDH website states the following. All testing is voluntary. Testing will be voluntary for students and staff at participating schools. Only individuals who return completed consent forms may be tested. How does this align with the current WPS testing policy, which currently requires testing if you do not share your vaccination status, rather than making it voluntary? And I won't read through the rest there. My next inquiry is related to air quality, and I'm serious about making this a PBL, project based learning, and just taking a more bipartisan approach, a more updated approach to looking at our air quality and how is WPS currently complying in their building with the CDC guidelines for ventilation in schools? And yeah, I think the HR policy was pretty much, you know, we went over that. So does the phrase unable to work in your policy include any employees sick with COVID at WPS or disvaccinated employees sick with COVID? Will this policy be updated with clarifying language? And then finally, will HR be getting additional training over handling the medical privacy of employees after what occurred on Tuesday, January 22nd, when 200 plus contacts who are, who are being tested were CC'd rather than BCC'd in a testing email? That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Next, we have Carla Herrera. If you would please approach the podiums, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really happy to be here, sharing my question or my inquiry. It's been already expressed a couple times, but I guess we all have our own way. When it comes to testing for employees, why there is a discrimination according to vaccination status or the disclosure of it? I have selected this particular study from the CDC among many that reflect the same results. In July 2021, the CDC published a study of 469 COVID cases in Massachusetts. 346, that's 74%, were fully vaccinated. From the whole group, five individuals were hospitalized, four vaccinated and one unvaccinated. Official studies like this one put in question the narrative, narrative, I'm sorry, claiming that vaccinated people will have milder symptoms. Vaccinated people get COVID, transmit COVID, and also could be hospitalized from COVID. So again, the question is. So again, the question is, when it comes to COVID testing, why is there discrimination according to vaccination status or the disclosure of it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herrera. Is there anyone else here in the audience that did not have an opportunity to sign up on the sheet that would like to address the board?
He was first, I'm gonna let him go.
Mr. Newcomb? Mr. Newcomb, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chip Newcomb. I'm the Winchester Education Association President and am a resident of Ward Four, 206 Walker Street. According to a recent study out of the University of Michigan in the Michigan Health Department, Michigan students who attended schools with mask requirements at the beginning of the school year had lower rates of coronavirus transmission than those at schools without mandates. It's not even close. The infection rate for schools with mask policies was 62% less than schools without mask policies. So I'm here to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Van Hookelum for making this decision this past Thursday night to continue our mask policy in the WPS school system. Who knew that this little piece of cloth could create so much controversy? And yet, this little piece of cloth has allowed our schools to largely remain open during this entire pandemic, the entire pandemic. This piece of cloth has been integral in the ability of our students to walk into the school buildings and attend class in person as we have battled to drive down our COVID numbers while offering the students of Winchester an excellent education. As we've seen a spike in our positivity rates locally in the past few weeks, we've been diligent about masking and that has paid off in large dividends. Students have been able to come to class in person and receive the education they deserve. And it's important to remember that our friends at the Winchester Medical Center remain at maximum capacity as a result of this continued pandemic and the rise in our COVID numbers locally. So if we were to go maskless and if our numbers were to rise by 62%, we would overwhelm the medical center and many of our schools would be forced to go virtual due to staffing issues. And closing schools is not in the best interest of our students, staff and entire school community. I don't like wearing a mask. I don't enjoy hiding my face. I don't, I don't enjoy hiding my smile for my students. I laugh all the time. They can't see, they can't see it. I don't like that. But if that is a cost, if that is what it takes to keep schools open and to keep our kids educated, then that's something we must do. A safe school is an open school and it's imperative for all students that we keep our schools open. So once again, thank you for your efforts and your dedication to keeping our students and staff healthy and our schools open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Please remember once you get to the podium, state your full name or your name and full address, please.
Yeah, I might miss something. I'm a little short.
Hi, my name is Carrie Chapels. I live at 2055 Taylor Grace Court, Winchester.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch your name.
Carrie Chapels. I'm not going to ramble on. I came here to support my friend. My son has to quarantine, which is totally fine. It is what it is. I find it very interesting that I went to school today at 2:00 and the nurse had her mask past her nose, but yet I wore my mask the correct way. So my son apparently came in contact with his kid on Friday, but he can go back to school on Thursday. So somebody explain to me why my son went to school all day today, all day with a bunch of other kids, but he can go back to school on Thursday. I don't, to me, I would think he would have to go to school today and quarantine for five days with all due respect. So I'm just a little confused as this whole, the role system, I don't really understand it. So I really love that my son's going to be home. I get to teach him. I get to spend time with them. That's not my issue. I just don't understand this whole system of how one kid gets to do this, one kid's this. And our supposed everybody's trying to do, just this whole, it's a conundrum of everything. So that's all to say, I just don't really get it. The rule system, I don't get. That's all.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Chapels. I do want to make mention that though we do not address the comments here, we do listen to your questions and concerns and we'll make sure that they're addressed when it's appropriate. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the board that did not get an opportunity to sign up on the sheet? Okay, thank you. But that does conclude our public comments portion of our agenda this evening and that will take us to our consent agenda. Item number four on our agenda is consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Dr. Pierce Gonzalez, a second by Ms. Holman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? Thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to item number five on our agenda, we have reports and presentations. So I would like to welcome back Ms. Cablan and her team for the John Handley High School Improvement.
Good evening again. Tonight, I'm presenting the school improvement for John Handley High School. Please excuse me, there's a lot, a lot of data, a lot of work. We tried to put together a presentation that is, is a year and a half of work, worth of work. This is to, to continue the work we did last year, to continue our work with collecting data, making decisions based on those datas that we, the numbers we get all year long. So there is a lot here that I would like to share with you. Another thing that I would like you to bear in mind is that a lot of the data we have here is based on the 2019. Anything that has to do with the, with the, with the two numbers, 20, 20, 19, 20 and 2021 is not counted for the accreditation process. But before we move on to that, I just want officially and publicly thank the entire staff at John Handley High School and the Innovation Center. Starting from my AP team, the administrative, the AP, the assistant principals, the teachers, the teacher assistants, the administrative support, the cafeteria ladies, the bus drivers, the custodial staff for keeping us safe, keeping us healthy and providing an environment that is positive, that is conducive to learning for our students and keeping us, providing the best instructional opportunities for our students. So I want to just publicly thank the staff at John Handley High School. So if you take a look at our school improvement, the school improvement revolves around two things or two strengths. The first strength is teaching and learning. That's where we are focusing on reading and math. And the second strength is the school environment. So the whole presentation will be going back and forth between those two strengths. Strengths one, teaching and learning. The focus is on reading and math. And strength two is school environment where we look at our staff and how they feel about the school and our students and how they feel about the school. So that's, those are the two major things that we will be looking at. If you take a look at, let me go here. The school quality indicators are, we're using the same information from 2019 and you can see we're doing very well in different areas for the achievement process and the academic achievement, but we struggle still with chronic absenteeism with the dropout rate. So we're still focusing on those two because those are, that's the information or that's the data we have from 2019. So next is the same information we shared with you last year. This is the data for all students, where we are with the accreditation status and how we are measured to those, to those indicators. Of course, level one is the best level. That's where we are doing fine and we are fully accredited. When we go into level two and level three, that's where the school gets to a potential of not being accredited. So the goal is for us to be fully accredited and to change the dropout rate and the chronic absenteeism. Next, this is the demographics of this year. This is what John Handley, the students of John Handley, this is the makeup. We have 0.6% American Indian. We have 2.4 Asian, 10.4 African-American, a zero for native or Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. Forty, 43% of our students are white or identify as white. We have 36.5 Hispanic. Two or more races represent 7.1 and students with disability make 16% of our population. These are very important numbers because you will see later where we are struggling and where we are improving and doing well. So when we look at our demographics and we will look at our data and how do we approach what we're working on, we definitely go back to this and see who's doing well and who's not doing well and how can we put together a process and procedures to help those who need and need in help and to provide opportunities, more opportunities or challenging opportunities to those who are doing well. If you take a look at the next three slides, this is where we have our comparative data. We looked at the Virginia data and we looked at neighboring schools or comparable schools. You would see here, this is the reading and then you have the math and then you have the science. So we're going back and forth with both of them. If you have a circle there, the circle indicates that John Handley pass rate is either higher or equal to the state. And that's the comparison I did. You see that we do well with all students. We do well with Hispanic students, white students, economically disadvantaged students and English learners in passing the reading SOL. We struggle in other areas and it's okay to, to look at our data and say, we are not doing well in these areas or we're not serving these students. So what is it that we need to do? So you have the African-American students are not doing well in math, in reading. Two or more races were close to the state. Students with disability were not doing very well. And this is very, very indicative of the data that we have from the 2019. So when we take a look at that data, we know exactly where we need to focus. Next slide is the math SOLs. Again, we do well as far as all students together. We're very comparable to, to the Virginia scores. Our Hispanic students are doing very well in math here. So we, we would like to celebrate that. We like to celebrate that success and pat ourselves on the back and say, wow, we're doing very well here. So what is it that we're doing there that we can replicate with other groups? If you go down to economically disadvantaged students, we do very well with that too. So what is it that we're doing? I think a lot of this is keeping schools open. We provide, you know, instruction and all that going on for them. English learners, again, we are doing very well compared to the state. Next slide is science. Here in science, we still struggle with science. The only places where we are doing okay or compared to the state is with our white students and English learners, we're still the same. Didn't improve, but didn't go down. So these are things that we like to celebrate. But at the same time, as a leader, as a principal, I take responsibility for all that and I look at it and say, what is it that we're not doing? Let's talk about it. Let's focus on the things that are not working for our students. So where do we need to put our efforts and where do we need to improve? So that takes me to the second slide. Again, as I said, strength one is teaching and learning where we focus on reading and math. The first one is focusing on the reading. You see that we have the goal, our essential action is we're going to focus on the reading achievement, implement an aligned, written, tested and taught curriculum with clear objective. Very important when we look at our teaching styles and teaching practices, we look at, are we doing this coherently? Are we doing this in a comprehensive manner? Are we putting together a plan? And this can go all the way to the individual lesson plan that a teacher will put together. Is, are we putting together an aligned curriculum that is addressing the need of those students? So we look at every single thing from there. If you take a look at our SMART goal, this is a very hefty goal, but that's what I like. I like challenges. I like high standards. It's looking at what is it that we need to do the end of the year and hopefully we will get there. From our SMART goal, we go to the action steps. We look at, okay, this is our goal. Where can we find the resources? What are the steps that we will be taking to implement this, this plan that will get us to the goal? Not going to read all of them, but if you see one of the goal, the action steps here is create an MTSS team and determine how it will interact with the English Language Arts Department and make referral because we're focused on reading. And you will see later, I will share with you later, some very, very interesting data because of the things that we've been working on. So that's an MTSS team. That's why we're, all of the things we've talked about earlier will come to be seen here. Another thing that I would like to bring your, bring to your attention is explore hiring an interventionist. It's a reading interventionist for John Handley High School to monitor, maintain reading intervention programs. Later on, we'll be talking about the reading intervention. Next slide, because if we're focusing on our teaching and learning, we looked at how our teachers are teaching the class, doing the instruction in the classrooms. We looked at how teachers are putting together a lesson plan that makes sense to the students, that is relevant to the, to their experiences and are they reaching those students? So we fine-tuned our formal and informal observations of the classrooms to look at our instructional practices. And one of the things we did, hiring an instructional coach who is phenomenal. I love Mrs. Spitzer's and the work that she does. She does a lot of informal walks in classrooms and takes a lot of notes on the instructional practices in the classrooms and then look at ways to make sure that these instructional practices are beneficial to the students and are bringing results at the end. Again, one of the things that we, we did with, with the information, informal, formal observations is to focus our staff on two things and those are state mandated processes that we have to implement in the classroom because they are research-based and they bring results. So we have two phases that we've been working on is going with our teachers and teaching them and refining how we give lesson plans and how we do lesson plans. The first one was focus on the objective, the itinerary or, and the big idea. These things are good for kids. Kids love it because kids know exactly what they're looking for, exactly what they will be doing in the classroom. And the second phase is the criteria for success. When kids come to, to class and they have no idea where they're starting, why are they talking about certain subject? Why do they need to learn about that subject? And at the end of the classroom, what can I do as a student to be successful at the end of this lesson? So we focused on that and we made sure that this is a process that every single teacher will follow at John Handley. And you have examples in the, in the bottom there. Another, this, this is an example of framing the learning. Um another, this, this is an example of framing the learning. Uh if you walk into um John Handley High School now and ask a teacher, what's frame the learning? They're like, oh, F L T, I know that. Um framing the learning is telling people, what what are you teaching today? Why are you teaching that? What are we learning today? Why are we learning it? And what do I need at the end of the class to be successful, to show you that I got it? I understood the lesson, I got the instruction, I can answer the questions. So framing the learning is a model that is very specific and helps the teacher, helps the student um through the lesson. And you see here the seminary objective, the itinerary, what are we doing, how we're doing it? There's a warm-up and a criteria for success at the end. Next, I wanna share with you one of the successes that I consider uh for this year. Is last year, we um identified um um areas of where our students struggle. But it was based on, yes, some SOL data from here, some observations, so it was not formalized. And I wanted from last year to look at a formal process where I can tell what are my students at John Handley know or not know, can they read, can they not read? Where are they? Because if I know where they are, I can support them, I can help them. I can figure things out with the team, we can talk about it, we can say, okay, these are the things that we need to work on. So we um implemented the Laxia um assessment. And the Laxia assessment is a great program. We we um actually um uh varied different programs to show us our uh students' reading level. And if you take a look at this, the Laxia Power Up Reading Support, this is just an example of the data that we res- we we get from it. So the 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 Laxia program gives you the skill. They identify the skill, they tell you, okay, the skill that your students are in need or they know or they are mastered are three. It's the word study, it's the grammar, it's the comprehension. So where do your kids fall within those skills? And then it gives you the zone. Where are they in each zone? And then it gives you the um the process of what is it that you need to do for those students to master those skills and what zones do you need to to have them? So it helps the teacher figure out, okay, Johnny knows word word um uh study. Johnny excels in this, but Johnny has problem with comprehension, so we're gonna focus on comprehension. Where other students are the opposite. They they struggle here, but they are doing well here. So it helps a lot in putting together the plan for how do we address reading. And the reason we're doing this is because of next slide. This is this is the the data from our students. So we administered the Laxia and I'm very, very um happy that we did that because it confirmed our our um observations of our students. Our students cannot read on grade level. And if you cannot read, you cannot do math, you cannot do science, you cannot do history. Reading is fundamental. And if you are in a high school, ninth grade, very complicated science books, uh the textbooks are very complicated, you cannot read, you will never be unable to understand, you'll never be able to to do the work that is required. And not just read to understand, it's read to understand, to analyze, to to uh uh create all those dispositions and skills that we're asking our students to do if you have thirty-four percent of your student population cannot read on grade level. So it was eye-opening data for me, for the staff. The staff didn't believe it at first, like, really? It's like, yeah, we have thirty-four percent of our students who are not able to read on grade level. And that's why we struggle with graduation, we struggle with other things. And this affects absenteeism because kids will not do well, they don't feel, okay, I can be successful. So they don't come to school. So all of this is continuing, um is connected together. So we have to figure out what is it that we need to do to bring students back. Uh so that's with that work and because of the reading, the reading needs. Last year, we we talked about creating a literacy team. Um and this literacy team will uh be the the um the team that is responsible and uh knowledgeable and the expert in um looking at the data because the, what I showed you for Laxia is very, very the surface of that data. But you can really, really dig into the data and analyze it to look at more specific things. So our literacy team has a PLC among other PLCs and that's why um uh when we talk about MTSS later on, you will see all these people, all these groups working together. We're not in silos anymore. We used to be in silos, you know, so-and-so is doing this, this team is doing that. Right now is we're bringing it all together. So this is an example of our PLC agenda. Uh we have a team that is made up of different um uh knowledge and different expertise. Uh they meet, they discuss data, they discuss things that we discovered from uh the Laxia program and they ask questions, they put together ideas and they um come up with the with the in in innovative ways of of how to address um our students. So I'm very happy with the work they do. Next slide, um because of this work and because of uh the Laxia data that we um uh gathered, I um put together in my budget, um I I I request to reinstate the reading specialist uh for John Handley High School uh because we need the help uh we can get. We need all the help. You can tell from this that you have thirty-four percent of our student population cannot read at a grade level. And this is very concerning. If we want them to graduate, if we want them to achieve and if we want them to pass SOLOs, we have to provide them the support for the reading. Uh so the reading intervention is very crucial. There we come to the MTSS. Um MTSS stands for Multiple Tiered System of Support. And this is where you have um different people coming from different uh places. You have the teachers, you have the um psychologists, you have the um counselors. Uh different people are coming with different expertise to give background on students, on specific students because you can see Johnny as a teacher, you see him in different ways or in another form other than the counselor. When they come to talk to the counselor, they talk to them for a half hour, for twenty minutes, for ten minutes. So they they have a different perspective where the teacher who sees them every single day in class, interacting with them that way. Um so we bring all these people together to give us um information about how do we deal with our students. So if you see the team here is made up of different people, administration is is part of that, social workers, psychologists, diagnostician, um the instructional coach, to provide students with the best way to uh to give them support. Another thing we did this year, and I'm very proud of that, is our language at Handley um changed. Our language at Handley um evolved and grew from uh when when I first came, we had rescue team. We had discussion over the rescue team. What does it mean? Rescue team usually is what? It's after the fact. We're rescuing people after they failed. So we decided to call it a success team. Success team is proactive. We're looking at the students from the beginning of school year. Yes, sometimes we reach that student by the end of the school year, sometimes we don't. But I want it to be part of our language. We are a success team, we are looking for success, we're providing students with success plans and we believe in their success. So that's another um change in the culture of looking, instead of saving them at the end, we're gonna provide them with ways to be successful the whole year. Teachers can refer students and that's based on their observations in class, their scores, uh their work habits, their their grades. Uh we have kids failing classes. So we bring that and say, okay, who's the failure list? Let's take a look at our failure list. Who needs support? Who needs that? Uh so all teachers can have, uh can do a referral. Uh the referral goes to the success team. The success team meets and design a plan for that student. So it's basically individualized, it's personalized for those students based on what they need. Um again, um you have for your um uh later on, for your reference, you have the MTSS process and this in the flow chart. And this work is, has been done by um us talking with Mr. Ray, uh the secondary education. Um and you can see we're bringing all these people together because we cannot do the work um separately and we cannot do it in silos. So we have to bring everyone together. Okay, now I'm stuck, how do I get back? But please take a look at the MTSS flow chart because we we with with doing that, we're looking at how do we bring all people together and not work in silos. So the second strand, thank you. This um uh the second part of this first trend, which teaching for learning, is the math. Again, as I said, uh we're focusing on reading and math. Same idea, uh we have SMART goal and we have the action steps. Um one of the action steps that I would like you to 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 pay attention to um is uh working with our counseling department. We've made a lot of changes with our counseling department um because uh some of the um issues or the problems that we had before is not putting students in the correct placement. Um so proper placement uh for students is something that uh the math team and um the counseling department are always in talk with each other to see what's the proper uh placement for students based on their request, based on their grades, based on um their their past behavior. Uh again, we uh put together a targeted remediation. Uh that's before the end, of course, uh which is the SOLO. Okay, we do the same with the referral. We go back here to uh the counseling department, the course scheduling and the um uh uh career placement. Uh very important that we uh discuss the counseling department. We've made a lot of changes uh with the counseling department where uh there is a lot of communication with parents, there is a lot of communication with students and a lot of review for the student data. Uh we look at current grades, we look at teacher pra- uh feedback and the student um academic and career plan. Where do they wanna go? What is their goal? We made sure this year that we have this conversation with every single student. What do you wanna do? Because based on what do you wanna do, what your family wants you to do, based on that information, we can put together a good plan for you to be successful. I don't want you in a in a course where it's not gonna do you anyw- any good because you don't wanna go to college, you wanna go to a trade school. So whatever it is, we need to personalize our um plans for students. So we made sure that this is um uh part of the counseling department is every day, they meet with students in and out to figure out proper placement so they are successful. Now we go to strand two, which is school environment. Um school environment here is uh focused on chronic absenteeism. We do have a problem. We do have problems with students not coming to school. And we continue to um analyze the pull factors and the push factors. What is it that pushing our students away from school? Some of it is the reading level. Students cannot read, they feel they're not successful. They cannot make it, they will not be able to graduate. So they give up, they don't show up. So we're trying now to look at the root cause of the chronic absenteeism. And we're hoping that the more we implement the multi-tiered system of support because once we do that, we pair people with with teachers, we pair them with people who can support them and help them and give them some hope that they can do it, they can make it. Uh so that's part of the MTSS. Uh we do, uh again, you take a look at the 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 action steps. There are only four, but they are very, very crucial. We do frequent meetings with the counseling department and the success team to review the student cohort da- data. Who's graduating, who's in at risk of not graduating? Uh who do we need to reach? Who do we need to bring to put on um agility, classes for recovery, whatever it is that we need to do? It is whatever it takes, that's our our motto. We continue to implement the success team to monitor students attendance and intervene when um necessary. Again, we go back to implementing the MTSS uh and clearly communicate the expectations. Here we see the MTSS uh support and earlier um um Karen, you asked about the MTSS and how it works. This is, this is what MTSS stands for is it's uh tiered intervention. Usually you have eighty to eighty-five percent of your population in the school falls into the core instruction in tier one. They they get it, they are in the school, uh they they are fine, they can function, uh they can do well, they don't need a lot of support. So those is your typical student who can be successful in school. And then you have ten to fifteen percent who fall into either tier two or tier three. And w- our job is to look for those students who fall into these two categories, tier one, tier two and tier three, and provide them with the intervention. So tier two is, huh, yeah, they're in the middle, we can provide some targeted intervention and that will work. And some falls into, fall into the tier three. You have to have intensive um uh intervention. And that's where uh the uh the best model for this is sometimes you will see, you know, one teacher for twenty students and if you go to tier two, it's one to ten. But if you go to tier three, that's where you have a team of maybe five or six people to one student. So it's very, very incentive uh in 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 intensive. So you're bringing a lot of people to work with one student and you do the same thing with the next student. Um so you're providing a lot of of uh uh very, very specific um intervention. Uh we do the meetings all the time, they meet two to three, uh you know, every two or three weeks. Uh success teams, weekly, they meet to bring the attendance data together and the behavior data together. Um and then um our social workers are part of that. They communicate with the parents and communicate with the students about uh their attendance and uh their behavior. Next slide here is school en- uh environment two, that's part of the second strand. Um again, we are looking at uh making um John Handley a place where everybody belongs, everybody is happy, everybody wants to be in school and that's based on our Panorama survey. So we're hoping that we get to where we need to be. Um some of the action steps we have here is providing a lot of um, the same way we look at our students, we look at our teachers. If teachers need professional development, we don't wanna give them a blanket, you know, professional development that will not maybe be good for them or not. So we personalize that too. So if you need a professional development that is tied to your subject, tied to your um level of class, then that's what we will provide you with. So there is a lot of things that we are providing teachers with frame the learning training. Because that's proven to be successful. And this is a state mandate. So we're following in that. We are a believer in the empowered learning. And this is our vision as a school district. So we provide training in that. So we're trying to make the school a place where everyone feels like they're, they're appreciated and the learning that they do is very beneficial to them. With that, take a look at our professional development. We've done a lot, this is just, you know, to show you the different professional development we provide for teachers. And on February fifteenth, which is a division-wide, we will be doing more professional development. We're always looking for growth, our growth, my growth, my teachers, my admin, everybody needs to grow. And we're providing that. I'm gonna share with you an example of when we celebrate teachers, when we celebrate successes, success stories here, we have Ms. Taffy Clark did an amazing job in putting the learning into practice. So if they're learning about framing the learning and how is it beneficial to students, they're doing it in class. And this is a great example of, of a success story. So we, we did highlight Ms. Ms. Clark on how she did her framing the learning and how she opened the lesson and how she brought students to be engaged in the lesson because they knew the, the goal of the lesson and why we're learning it. Our empowered learning goals for the, for the division. One of the things we did at the beginning of school year is we checked with teachers. We surveyed teachers on what do they know about project-based learning? Because we want the learning to be authentic, to be relevant to students, and they want, I want them to enjoy it. We want them to really enjoy the learning and love it. Because they're doing something that is relevant to them and makes sense to them. So project-based learning is, is a great way to, to increase the student engagement in the classroom and outside of classroom. So we ask teachers, how many lessons are they planning to design this year? And that's the result here, you see, that we have forty-four percent of our teachers are planning to design PBL lessons. And then we ask them, how many would you like to, to implement? Some teachers are ready to go with PBL, they have the training, they know what to do, and they are excited about it, and they can design it, and they are ready to roll with it. Some teachers are not there, and that's okay. We will teach, we will, we will do professional development, we will provide that support until you get it. So some teachers are planning and some teachers are implementing it. And I'm very proud of the team that is implementing the PBL. Next slide is our two examples of PPL projects that took place this year. We have many, but I didn't, I couldn't put everything here. So we had two examples. We have Mr. Westman, he was here tonight. Mr. Westman is doing a very interesting thing in his class. He teaches students with special education students. And they have been raising trout in, in, in their classroom. And when they are a certain size, a certain time of the year, they will go and release them into the, the river. So I'm very excited about this, the kids follow, it's very scientific. And it's unbelievable when I walk in and the kids say, oh, today the temperature is this and we have to keep it at this much. And they know exactly what to do with, 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 with the fish and when they will release them. The other project is Mr. McKernan's class. They did an interfaith panel where they shared the information they are learning in his class, and it was amazing. We got a lot of compliments about that project. And I'm hoping that Mr. McKernan will continue to do activities like this, because the kids, the kids loved it. We got a lot of compliments about that. Moving on to another school environment, SMART goal that we have is, we're looking at our referral and our discipline data. Because I, we want students to belong. We want them to feel welcome at John Handley. We want them to, to feel that this is a safe place where they can make mistakes and learn from it. But I don't want them to, to feel they are targeted or they are punished. So one of the things we're looking at is looking at our discipline data, the reasons why, where are these discipline infractions are happening? So we really, really dig into the data. So hopefully with our action steps here, we will get to a place where we can decrease the disproportionality of our referral. And again, we go back to the MTSS, the PBIS, the importance of having the whole team work with those students so we can decrease those infractions. This is again, another way of looking at everything that we do. Remember the eighty percent who are in tier one? Those are students who are, are doing fine and just, you know, reiterating the culture at John Handley of respect. They get it, they do it and they're fine. But you need to provide the extra support for tier two and tier three, and that's where we personalize our approach. And you take a look here, we talk about expectations of, of school, being in school. You, we, we talk about a welcoming culture. We look at how do we engage students? What are the student engagement tools that we can provide for students to, to come to school and enjoy it? Modeling of appropriate behavior and then responding to inappropriate behavior. So all this come together to support students. So let's look at our data. This is our discipline data. And if you take a look at our discipline, what I like about the, this program, the Swiss program, is it gives you a lot of information so you can target the issues and understand where do you need to, to focus. So the first one, it gives you information about the referral by grade. You can see that most of the problems we have this year is what our, our ninth graders. Our ninth graders did not have school. You know, last year they had some, some of them were home, and the year before they had half of the year. So we're re-teaching, you know, proper school etiquette and school behavior. So we have, most of them are ninth graders. So we know, okay, we need to do more with our ninth graders and we need to focus on them. Second slide gives you infractions by location. So where are our infractions happening? Most of it is in the classroom. So that tells me that, okay, we need to work on our classroom management with teachers, we need to look at our engagement, how do we engage students so they are not more prone to misbehave? So what can we do with our teachers and look at why the behavior in the classroom? What's going on in the classroom? So we visit and we talk and we see what are the issues? Because most of it is happening there, it's fifty-one percent. Next slide is referral by behavior. What are the issues? Most of it is students skipping class. They're out of, out of class. And this is for December, by the way. So we look at it every single month. So we look at, okay, they are out of class, why are they out of class? What is the system that we put together to make sure that students are in class and not skipping? What is it that we need to do? I think I have another one, but I can't. Okay. The next one is, this is where, again, students feeling welcomed and feeling the, the belonging in school. We wanna increase that to fifteen percent more than what we have now. Again, we have action steps. We're hoping to continue working and refining the MTSS. Again, MTSS is new, so we will see, I'm hoping we will see more results once we are putting it in plan the second semester and we're working with the students. We're trying to increase displays of students' work in the building. Right now, when you walk to Hand, in Handley, you don't see that. So hopefully this is something that we're changing as we move forward. I promise, it's the, two more slides. I have a lot that I can share with you, but I tried to bring it all together to, to this. School belonging is another thing we're focusing on. You see in this slide, we do a lot of communication with students to help and encourage them to participate in after-school activities. I'm a believer that if a student is involved in extracurricular, they will do well, they will succeed. So I've been trying hard with my team to increase the number of students who are doing something constructive after school. And we keep on meeting with students to look at different ideas of, if they don't, if we have a, if they have an idea and they want to create a new club, I sit with them all the time, it's like, okay, tell me, what's your idea? What do you wanna do? Sure, go for it. You wanna start a new club? Please do. So we encourage students to, to continue to do things like this. We communicate a lot. We have, right now, we have four hundred eighteen students, athletes who are involved in some sports. I would like that to go up. So we're, we're, we're putting some plans to, to make that happen. The counseling department is in the process of working on a mentoring program. So hopefully we'll put it together this semester. And then if I don't take care of my staff, they cannot take care of my students. So one of the things that I'm focusing on this year with my team is to take care of our staff. So one of the things we, we did this year, we established a social committee. The social committee is to lift up morale and bring together the team as a family, as a community. We did start Fun Friday, and it's a lot of fun on Fridays, where teachers gather together and we created a faculty lounge that was not there before. Teachers come to the faculty lounge and they chill there whenever they have time to come and just decompress and talk and share ideas. The social committee, just amazing, they've been doing different events, and one of them is the chili cook-off next week, or actually this Friday. So this is all I have for the school improvement. I will open it now to questions. Please be easy on me. It's what, it's eight o'clock? I hope that I provided you with a lot of information. I just wanted you to know that the staff is working hard. Everyone is, is, the goal is to provide students with, with support, with instructions, with, with anything they need. And definitely, I thank you for your support because we can't do this without you. So hopefully you have some questions for me, I can answer tonight.
Ms. Cablan, thank you so much. This, this information that you provide to the board is important. And so even though it's a lot, I think all of it is necessary for us to have some additional insight. And really, I'm, I'm happy to see the data, which then tells us, you know, how do we inform the behaviors that we need to change so that we can improve our outcomes? So thank you for that. I'll open up the floor for any questions or comments for Ms. Cablan. I know it's a lot, so hopefully we'll be able to address as many questions as we can. I will ask, though, if you have a question, and as we go down the line, we don't want to be so repetitive in questions and comments, so let's just try to, you know, be careful of doing it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cablan, for this report, a very thorough, extensive report. Thank you very much. Well, I'm very happy to see that our Hispanic learners and our yellow learners are doing extremely well. That's something that we should applaud and maybe put out to the public so that, that could be something that, that people cheer us on for. I would love to see this presentation given next year and see some gains with our Black students and our mixed-race students. I think that we are failing them, quite frankly. It wasn't just that they were below some of those averages, they were way below some of those averages. So that's just the place, and I'm sure you've got people looking at that and analyzing ways to make that happen. The chronic absenteeism issue, I also wonder if that's something that Ms. McCamber Lee's new position might be able to help out with as we put out to the public just how important it is to make sure that your students are, are, are coming to school. You know, what do the studies show? What, how does that benefit students in our community and our school system? I think that might be something to explore as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Holman?
Ms. Cablan, you really bared your soul in this. I know it wasn't difficult, I know it was difficult coming into Handley, difficult having to make so many changes. Change is always hard, particularly when you're the new kid on the block. So I appreciate your, your transparency and your honesty. Some of these, you are the principal, so these are your numbers, but some of how we got here is not necessarily yours to own, but it is yours to fix. So, and I'm, I'm being easy on you.
Thank you.
With respect to the comparative data, you know, typically we compare ourselves to divisions which are similar in terms of demographics and so on and so forth. You put yourself way out there compared Handley to some of, some schools that are, are not like ours. And I think that is reflected in some of the disparity of the numbers with respect to Winchester versus, you know, like Richmond and Roanoke and so on and so forth. You did mention disproportionality in referrals. I, for one, have been asking about those numbers for a long time in terms of what those disparities look like. And I'm the one board member who will always ask when I see these, when we see these titles, what do they mean? Defiance, insubordination, and noncompliance. As a teacher, you know, I know we're supposed to respect our teachers, but our teachers are also supposed to be respectful of our students, which is why I so appreciated the earlier discussion about neutrality and those, those people, not necessarily trusted messengers, but those people that can help teachers understand what a student's trying to say and help students understand what a teacher's trying to say. With respect to the PBIS and the tiers, I would argue that if thirty-four percent of our students cannot read, thirty-four percent of them at grade level or significantly below grade level, they need to be in that top tier because they need some help. So I know that is typically eighty percent, ten to fifteen and five, but any student that is reading more than two grades below grade level needs some extra help because you're absolutely right. If they can't understand what's going on in school, they're more likely to have behavioral problems, they're more likely to skip school, and they're more likely to be maybe those kids that are referred to court for juicing and end up potentially in a school prison pipeline when they don't turn that around and show up at school every day, all day, unless they have a doctor's note. And lastly, there's a whole lot more, but lastly, you mentioned that the counseling department is going to be in work on a mentoring program. I know that for several years, the NAACP Educational Committee was trying to get into Handley to, and they have mentors who are ready to go. I would encourage your, your team to reach out to them and see if they can help. So thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Ms. Trupin?
You went really easy on me, shouldn't have asked any questions.
And if you, you want me, you know, I, I And if you, you want me, you know, I, I know some of us are, are comments, but if you need me to answer specific questions, please let me know.
No, I would echo Ms. Holman's, um, commentary. I just think it takes a lot of courage to publicly own data that, that especially, um, some of it, you know, was here before you arrived. So thank you for taking that leap and being so open with us. I do have a couple actual questions. Um, on the Alexia testing, it looked like around eleven hundred students took that assessment. Couple hundred right below the, the enrollment at Henley. Was it just administered on one day? Was there a group of students not included in that testing?
It's, it's a, it's a mix of, uh, reasons. Some of them, um, are not there, some of them didn't wanna take it, parents refused to take it. Um, so it's a mix of, of answers.
Okay. And then, when it says, let's say, you know, sixty-four percent, um, passed, in order to pass, is it just reading on grade level? I think we need to be really careful with our language because I'm, I'm concerned there were a number of times where we said students cannot read, and that's not what's being said. If students are not reading at grade level or below multiple grade levels?
Yes, either.
Or just below their grade level?
Is either, um, below grade level significantly?
Okay.
Or at grade level. And the Lexia, uh, gives you, um, it's not passing, it's, these students did very well on this test. This is a grade level, reading or they're beyond their grades. And then, the kids who, the students, the thirty-four percent, either significantly below or below grade level. And usually, um, uh, it will tell you, this is, especially if you take a look, let's see which one here. Because when your, when your students are struggling in the word study, take a look at the level of the word study. The word study is something that we do in kindergarten to second grade. So that tells you a student is struggling in that grade level. If they have, if they are struggling with word study. If they are, um, struggling with, um, uh, with grammar, then yes, you're, you're approaching third and fifth, to fifth, to fifth grade. So that's another level that you're looking at. And if a student has all those together, then you cannot place them in a specific grade. But they are struggling in competencies that are kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Those competencies should have been mastered at that level. So you might have a student who struggled with all three, you might have students struggle with only one, and we might have students who struggle in reading but never been identified for special education. So it's because at the high school level, you, it's very, very difficult. It's almost impossible to, to, um, identify students for special needs at that, uh, grade. So, um, it depends on what is it you're looking for with Lexia, but it gives you a general information about that student's level. Where are they, um, and what areas do they need to work on?
Thank you. And, and I hope that, you know, since we're leveraging that tool across multiple grade levels, that we can be sharing that data and not waiting till August and September to assess, analyze, right? And by the time we implement it, it's November, December, when these students may have been on Lexia, the Lexia program since they were five, right? And, and so we should know going in or have some kind of leading indicators to better inform and require less testing in general.
Sure. We, with, with the Lexia, we administered it in, in, uh, in October. I want it to be at the beginning of school year so I have time to work with students and identify where exactly we need to work on, and hopefully, we can make some gains by the end of the school year. Um, of course, these, these issues are not a one-year fix. These issues will take years of, of addressed, being addressed. As long as we put together a comprehensive program that is sustainable, that is targeted, and we keep it, keep going with it. We don't give up on the students, we continue and see gradual improvement. This is the goal, is to find the base, where are we, and then work from there. And I'm hoping and I'm, I'm confident that we will see gain the more we work on these issues, identify them with, with research. It's not like, you know, oh, I don't think he knows how to read. It's not subjective. These are objective, um, data. So hopefully, that we will see some gains.
I have one additional line of questions. On the, um, chronic absenteeism, so we're halfway through the school year. We, we know what chronic absenteeism is defined as. Are we on target to meet the fifteen percent or are we already?
No, we are not. We are not. We're still struggling. This is something that, um, we've been talking about, how to, um, to, to address that. Um, right now, we're looking at attendance work is, works is a, um, is a program that we're, we're, um, trying to see, uh, the steps to address chronic absenteeism. The first one is awareness, is raise awareness in our community that we have a problem and we need to work together as a community to bring those students back. Um, we have, you know, the pull factors outside is work and sometimes kids, you know, I need to make money, I can't be there. Um, you know, understanding the system and how do we, um, uh, help our students and provide alternatives? If, if, you know, um, I'm looking at all options. I'm trying to look with my team as different options. Okay, if we can't bring Johnny to school, you know, in the morning, can we do half a day? Uh, can we do something virtual? Can we do whatever it is that we're looking at different options? But I think the first thing is awareness, is raising awareness of how important it is for students to be in school and having that open communication with, with parents and families at home to address this issue. Uh, because unfortunately, you get to a point where you can't enforce it. You can't enforce any, any consequences for those students. Uh, so it's very, very important that we do the awareness, um, uh, first with parents and let them know how important it is and how, um, detrimental to them if they are not in school.
Right. And I hope that, you know, this is more productive and useful, but it's, the, the, that awareness, I don't feel like the school should be carrying the, all of the burden of that awareness. This should be a community-wide effort.
One hundred percent, yes.
That we can leverage our city council, we can leverage key employers in the area that, that carry these messages consistently and, and the more we can reinforce it. So it's not, oh, it's another alert now from WPS. Yes, I know my child should, right, should be in school and, and we delete, there's, there's so many alerts now. But how do we embed that into the DNA of our community? That so we're all speaking a common language, all the leaders across multiple organizations and government entities, to help drive that and we're not just excusing, well, yeah, sure, you know, we, we fight in our own home. I'm sure all of us have kids, like, you know, they're tired that day or they're up till eleven o'clock and it's hard to get out of bed at six AM, whatever. But, um, I think it's bigger than that. It's gotten to the point in our community that if, if we're really not seeing reductions, we have, we have to think differently. We can't just keep doing what we've been trying to do for years and that seems to be addressed at the family level. I'm not saying we stop doing that, but.
Add to it.
It's almost like we need a dedicated group that includes multiple community leaders to, to tackle this issue, to look at other localities and school divisions similar to ours. You know, is Harrisonburg fighting this type of absenteeism? And if not, what are they doing? And how can we leverage that instead of trying to recreate the wheel?
But I, uh, I was in the process of putting together, um, a team that can look at different, um, uh, ways of, of addressing absenteeism in the, um, surrounding area. Um, I'm one hundred percent, I agree with you, that it's not a school issue only. It's a community issue, it's, uh, the, um, uh, the, uh, employers who, you know, employ students during school time. So it's, it's a lot of, of us together, uh, coming, uh, to, to address this issue.
Ms. Popper?
Thank you very much for your report. I feel like you have said previously that sometimes when, uh, people start falling so far behind, it could cause them to be absent from school because they get frustrated with themselves.
Yes.
Uh, what percentage would you say of the students that have fell way behind, especially on reading, that they came completely through our school system from grade one, from first grade?
Very good question. I do not have the data. Uh, but we can, we can look at it. I can, you know, go back and see, um, the previous schools. Um, I do not have that, but a very good question.
I think you need to address earlier, before high school. Because if, if you start, if you cannot read in middle school, well, by the time you get to high school, you're already out of the game. So I think it's something that we need to work through our whole system together.
Yes, one hundred percent. I, I, uh, agree with you because we need to have that vertical, um, alignment with our other schools and seeing, okay, what percentage of our school who are, um, uh, coming from the elementary and middle school and what happened there. Uh, because, you know, at the, we, we are at the end of the, you know, the, the, the journey. And we have to fix all those years that, you know, whatever gaps, you know, students, um, had in their learning, um, journey, uh, we're, we're the one fixing it. Um, sometimes we can, sometimes we can't, and we have to be very honest about that. Um, so definitely, I can take a look at it and see, uh, what percentage of those students.
Ms. Cablon, I just have one question. I'm looking at the slide, Teacher Empowerment Twenty Twenty-Five Goals, it's slide twenty-three. I just had a quick question around project-based learning. When I look at the pie charts there, I guess I was a little bit surprised to see that we have zero for lessons to do, plan, to design, to design this year. We had zero was, can you see what the percentage is? It's small percent. But then on the other one, it has nine point three percent, um, only that, I'm sorry. How many PBL lessons do you plan to implement this year? There was only nine point three percent. And so when I'm thinking about it, I'm thinking about our strategic plan. I'm also thinking about, we know that project-based learning and teacher professional development really do fit into the strategic plan. How do we encourage teachers to use this? To use project-based learning to kind of improve some of those outcomes, keep, um, students engaged? I just think that if we know, if we have something that works and we can prove that it works, then we really should be encouraging all of our teachers to use it in some, some capacity. So for me to see that we have zero, that's not even designing it this year or, or not planning to use it to be, is a problem.
Thank you for bringing that up. Um, we have to, um, remember that some teachers have been trained to do PPL and they feel confident about, you know, uh, implementing or designing. Some teachers have not, um, especially if you have a teacher coming from a different school district that PPL was not part of their, um, their learning. Um, it's, uh, this is a change of culture. This is a, a, a progress, this is growth. Um, even when it is a problem, it is, at the same time, it shouldn't be a problem. Because we just need to figure out, okay, this is a, um, project-based learning is a proven model for student success, for student engagement. It's proven. Uh, no one can disagree with that because we've seen it and we've seen the data that supports that. It's now thinking about our staff and where we are to implement this. And it's okay to understand that some teachers are ready for it, some teachers are not. But it's not okay to say, we're not gonna get you ready. So the goal is to get everyone ready. And, uh, people are in different phases, um, of, um, understanding what is PPL and how do I implement it? And for some, um, subject, PPL is a little bit harder than the other ones. In science and math, it's very easy to, to come up with a project that is BBL, that is a project-based. In language arts and in social studies, that's where people struggle. Oh, okay, yeah. Uh, okay, there is. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Ray. Yes. Yes, I can't read it from here. Um, I'm sorry, I can't read this from here and I didn't have a slide with it, but Mr. Ray, can you help me out?
Um, teachers at K twelve, um, signed up for this because we had a lot of discussions about project-based learning and it, there wasn't maybe that nudge to go over, over into the pool, if you will. Um, what's my next step? So we designed this so teachers could say, you know what, right now, I'm just ready to get professional involvement. I wanna go to some in-service workshops, conferences, but I, I wouldn't know the first thing about writing a lesson plan. Then in, in phase two, somebody says, okay, I've gotten enough of it. I wanna work with instructional coaches and just work on designing lessons. The third one is, I'm ready to actually, um, implement and get feedback from a coach, perhaps they actually watch me. And then stage four, I'm so good, people can come in and watch me do it. But maybe what was reflected, Murray, is the number one, where people aren't just saying, well, I'm not gonna do writing lesson plans. They're saying, I wanna, I want more PD, you know, I'm not quite ready for that stage. And what we liked about this is, we didn't say everybody in the division's at the same, to your point, at the same place. And we expect every classroom when we walk in, we see PBL. We say, we're gonna meet you where you're at as an instructor. And this was a commitment of the teachers to say, okay, this is the safe place. Here's where I'm comfortable on those different phases. That, that helps out.
It does help. And so how often, then, not to belabor, but how often are we assessing the teacher's competency in terms of being able to kind of move through those pha- those phases of, I'm not ready to, yeah, I think I'm ready now? Is that something that we are keeping an eye on? Or how are you kind of keeping, you know, watch in terms of where the, where the teachers and staffs are in terms of where we're looking at this model?
Yeah, our instructional coach does a great job with, when people say, you know, um, I'm interested in, can you help me design one or can you watch one? Um, we send out, um, um, there's some mini PBLs. We send out suggestions to teachers about, here's something you can do for Valentine's Day or something that's a little easier to experiment with. Um, and then certainly, when teachers, uh, are observed by administrators and they're doing a PBL-type activity. And sometimes we use the word full-blown. Uh, it's like a two-week full-blown PBL. And sometimes they just have an activity that has, um, it's, has the principles of PBL, um, in it and we make sure we give the feedback or a shout-out to the rest of the school, like, um, Mr. Denton said, awesome PBL activity.
And, and we did training for PBL in, um, in October. You would see it in the, um, um, professional development slide. Um, and we will continue to do so. We, we evaluate, we observe teachers, and we talk about it all the time. Um, and it depends on where the teacher fits in that, in those phases, we meet them where they are.
Yeah, I know, we've been going here for quite a while, but I think it's important to summarize a couple things from my vantage point. First of all, uh, Ms. Cablon, I think you have the record for the longest school curriculum plan presentation. But I, but I think it highlights the complexity and the scope of running, uh, school. In this case, of our largest school, a large high school. And as the principal, as the leader of a school, you have to take everything into account from how kids feel, to whether they come to school, to whether they're learning math, to whether they're learning English, et cetera. So thank you for the comprehensive report. And I loved all the links in there, so I encourage you, a lot of time was put into this. Do yourself a favor as a board member and explore the links that are embedded there, really digest it. But I really want to, uh, end with, it, it would be very easy to leave tonight and be discouraged by the reading, right? I wanna remind this group, I wanna remind Evan when he comes back in. Thirty-four percent, there it is, yeah, he wrote that. Um, it's no coincidence that thirty-four percent of our students at Henley are not reading on grade level. I wanna remind us that thirty-four percent exactly of our students are English-language learners, right? And so that means they're within their first four years of being in this country, of learning a brand-new language. And I always remind us, if you were to be dropped in Russia tomorrow and be asked to take Russian SOLs in reading and math and history and, um, and science, you might not be reading on Russian grade level either, right? And so, um, it's not, we, we, we continue to look at the data, but don't be so discouraged tonight. Um, because I don't believe the answer is to look down the ladder and say, well, they must, that middle school, my goodness, I, I tell you, they must not be doing their job in eighth grade or they must not be doing their job in fifth grade or third grade or kindergarten, et cetera. So it's important for us to remember. et cetera. So it's important for us to remember who our kids are and how that in particular affects reading. And the way you can really celebrate is when you flip the coin and look at math, oh my gosh, when, when language is not as intensive on the assessment, our kids really thrive and do very well. And you'll see in math, many times we outperform the state average. We outperform our peers. So I want to make sure that we remember that as we close this session. So thank you, Ms. Cablan.
Thank you for that insight because I totally agree with you. We, the last two months, we had an increase in our EL newcomers. And when I say newcomer, it's not just they just got here. It's newcomer. They don't have the English language. They don't have the skills to, to function in academic classes where the content is very high level. So with that, I leave you with this, that you have a staff that is committed. You have staff that is caring. They love the kids. They love teaching. They love what they do. And they're trying their best to provide the instruction to students. Handy is a great place. Our teachers are working very hard on meeting students where they are, and they have high standards for them. So we'll continue to work with our students and we'll continue to make improvements. Some things will improve right away, and that's great. We can celebrate that. Some things need us to be a little patient and look for the long, long term. So hopefully, we'll continue to work together and we'll continue to see successes and data improving. So thank you. And I'm sorry, I was the longest.
Chairman Chair, based on the lateness of the hour, I'd like to make a motion that we take about a five-minute break. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for a break, five minutes. Now, Ms. Holman? We have a second by Ms. Troopin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? All right, we are on a five-minute break. Please, that puts us back here at about eight-thirty-eight. And we'll start D38.
Thank you. I think we all need a little short break. So continuing on, we are now still in Agenda Item Number Five, but moving on to Section B, where we have Learn and Recovery and MTSS Update.
All right, good evening. This is just a, an overview of overall our MTSS implementation, where we are in terms of implementing K through twelve. And kind of the purpose of this is to do an update for the, the CARES Act as well. Some of these slides will look familiar that you've had before. The MTSS overview, MTSS is not really a silver bullet to solve all of our problems. It's more of a framework to kind of help us put everything together that we do well. So it doesn't feel like it's a bunch of silos, but it's all within the, and that's where we're making those changes now, is we have been kind of having these really good places and pieces. And now it's kind of developing into more of a process that is school-wide and a division-wide process. And that takes time. And so tonight in particular, we're going to look at the RTI portion of MTSS, which is the Response to Intervention, and looking at what we're doing in the K-six and seven-twelve buckets there. But as you can see underneath the umbrella, there's a lot of other things that go into what our schools do each day to help our students be successful. This was part of the presentation when we were talking about what we wanted to use the CARES Act money for. If you remember, we have to use about twenty percent of that for students and, and learning, the learning gaps that we knew were going to be evident throughout our year and a half of COVID leading up to this point. And so what we had presented to you at that time was looking at interventionists that are strategically placed at each school with our MTSS coach at the K-six and the seven-twelve. And so you've already met Jackie and you'll meet Stacy in a minute. But really, it's focusing on our students. And so getting the right people in place. We could purchase tons and tons of programs, but we really need good quality people to help with the, the growing gaps that we knew were going to be there. And so the, the structure that's kind of put in place to help develop our MTSS processes in all of the schools. For this slide in particular, you've seen this as well. This is the, the gold standard of a triangle that is not there right now. And I think when you hear about teachers across the country being stressed out, one of the number-one reasons is because they don't have a triangle in their classroom. If anything, it's an upside-down triangle. Where our tier-one students that are on grade level, everything's great, that's not many students. And so what looks to be, you know, five, ten years ago, my classroom, I had a couple of students that needed some interventions, but I could get them there myself. And I may have had one or two students that really needed some interventions. Now our teachers are facing a lot more students that are needing interventions. And that's not really any other fault, other than they haven't had a typical school year before. Some of our students were virtual, so there's a number of different things that we've discussed leading up to that. So along with the MTSS is looking at interventions, a lot more of those tier-three individual supports, which we know are needed. But also, it, it's important to remember that with that shift that our teachers are seeing, we're having to kind of change what tier-one instruction looks like. And that doesn't happen overnight either. When I'm a third-grade teacher and the majority of my students are typically on grade-level reading, I can kind of forge ahead. But when fifty percent of my kids are not, I have to kind of divide myself and, and do things much differently than what teachers are normally challenged with. And so our tier-one instruction with our specialists, our math specialists, our instructional coach, literacy specialists are working daily to help implement more changes for our teachers, to support them through all of these different things that they're now facing within their classrooms. And that's on top of the MTSS process. So, you know, it's, yes, we are looking at those students that are up there that are really behind and really have some gaps that we need to adjust. It's important, you know, to see that this, this triangle right now is not there. And, and so how do we do that, both in the classroom, but also with added supports? And so MTSS brings that all together, the process and the framework itself does.
So I was thinking today, this is, I'm in my thirty-first year in education, so I've seen a lot of things implemented and implemented well and also not implemented well in, in multiple divisions. What I'm really proud of with our implementation of MTSS aligns with those words that you see there. Our first thing, we had to hire nine individuals. And so we had a collaborative approach to have diverse pools on the interview panels. We selected great people. We were intentional in what we wanted to do. What we could have done in August, say the superintendent said, we need to have MTSS in, in our schools. When the teachers come, we're going to have a in-service and say, we're doing MTSS this year. And there's a, we're going to refer kids and, and have interventions for them. And you would have had very soon, I don't know what they're talking about and what are we supposed to do? Instead, particularly the secondary level, because I'll mention it later in the presentation, it's more a natural fit and it's been going on for years where students have, you know, they're not reading on their own in third grade and we provide interventions. It's less that that's done at the secondary level. So instead of saying, let me figure out something really quick, we were deliberate in saying, okay, what data would suggest a student, not just grades, but, you know, not reading on grade level, for instance, what should be our referral process? You know, what should the form look like? Who should be on the team looking at the data? How will we select the interventions? So I told Dr. Viniculum, I said, the first semester, we're building. And as Jackie pointed out, oh, we're starting this week. And I'm okay with that. Because we, we spent a semester doing it the right way and making a system that teachers understand what MTSS is, what's the difference between a support and intervention, finding a place, as you saw. So we have a very deliberate implementation that I'll think you, you'll see will equate to success rather than the opposite, which is called a rushed implementation, where you tend to, everybody's happy, you got it on its feet, but then the problems start to appear.
As Brian mentioned, K-six is a little bit different scenario. Like he said, we've been kind of doing implementation of interventions throughout. You know, it, it's a little bit more natural when it comes to foundational learning in math and reading. And so with that, it's more of, we've got five different schools that have been doing interventions and portions of MTSS a little bit differently. And so right now, it's, it's taking the, the work of the interventionists and Stacy, our coach, with our leadership teams, looking at data. And, you know, so some of these slides you've, you've seen before. The first one in particular, this is one that, when we were talking about bringing kids back to school four days a week, some of this data was used. So even then, we were using data to drive our decisions about what our students need. And when we spoke about our youngest ones first, I think it was October, you know, we were already using this PALS data to say that we need kids in front of us as soon as possible. And so PALS is phonemic awareness. And, you know, one of our data points that we use at the start of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year, and looking at how our students are growing. Of course, the goal doesn't always stay the same, so that changes as well. And so I put the, the 2019 spring data there just to kind of show where we were before any of the craziness happened. And when we're looking at, we were looking at twenty-eight percent of our kindergarteners still needing phonemic awareness interventions. And so if you think back to that triangle, that triangle looked a little better than what the next year kind of presented to us. And so this just kind of gives a breakdown of, and kind of color-coded, kind of following our kids along as to where we've gone up to this point. And this is, it kind of drives a little bit of, yes, it's only a dipstick of the middle and the end and the beginning of the school years, but it gives us an idea as to where our students are. And we know where they need to be. And so, you know, looking at the unfortunate piece of not having just a regular school year, and when you're talking about phonemic awareness with our youngest students, masks do not help. And, and so some of that we do know as well. And we, and our teachers are amazing at trying to do all they can to get our students as well-prepared for the next grade level as possible. Next data point is our VKRP. This is the kindergarten readiness. And again, this was another one that we had used to kind of say, we need our students here. And this doesn't look as bad as our, our reading, but it's, you know, it's still where we don't want it to be. And so again, with our youngest students, and when we're talking about where our students are coming from, you know, typically have a lot of our students going through our pre-K program. Last year, that wasn't the case. And so, you know, those small little things are just the reality of what we are having to deal with. But this gives just an indication of where our students come to us in terms of the readiness in math. And this is just a snapshot of a screener that was given in the fall. And already, you know, we assess all the time, our teachers assess all the time. And so this was just a snapshot as to where our students were at this point. There is growth happening. There is growth happening in ours. And, and so it's not that these benchmarks are still where our students are. They're still making growth, they're still learning. However, when there's gaps that were for the previous school year and, you know, the, my, if I'm a second grader, it's my first grade, you know, and of course I'm seeing it. I've got four kids in four different grade levels and you see it. And our teachers are seeing that too. And so if I'm a sixth grade teacher, I'm a sixth grade content teacher. However, half of my students are needing fourth grade and third grade content. That's a little bit more challenging than, you know, what we're typically used to. And so, I mean, I was a sixth grade teacher. And if you would have taught me that, told me that I needed to teach my kids how to read without any training, I would not have known how to do that. And so I think that's one of our challenges, our stress points for our teachers, is that, that's a lot of extra planning. And so part of our interventionists and our, and our coach, and our instructional coaches and our specialists are focusing on not just what we can do for interventions, but also what we can do instructionally in the classrooms to adjust, adjust some of the learning, the lesson planning, the assessments. Yes, there still has to be content that's grade level specific. But we also know that as our students move ahead throughout interventions, throughout those personalized lessons and activities, they can move forward a lot quicker. This last piece, Brian and I had presented to you a while ago on the growth assessment. And some of the information kind of changes as to what's going to happen next year. But, so starting this year, we have a fall growth assessment that was given to our students, third grade through eighth grade, math and reading. And, and so the state is going to be using these for accreditation purposes. And for this, when we're looking at it, you know, this is kind of big picture for the school based. It's not so much for a teacher, but, because our teachers know this. As soon as students are in the classroom, they know where they're, they kind of can, they know where their students are. And so what this growth assessment does do, however, at the school level, is when we're talking about accreditation, it's not just did they pass the SOL or did they fail it? Instead, did they make growth? And so if I'm a teacher that has a third grade student that's well below their reading level, looking at my student can make growth and having that kind of, I remember like if I had test scores on me all the time and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, I need 100% of my kids to pass it. But I know four of these students, I can get them close. Now that's a little bit easier to swallow where we're moving students. We're having them grow in math and reading. And so looking at how do we do that? And as you can see, it's a lot of students. And throughout the past two years, we knew that that was going, and this trend will probably continue, unfortunately, for some time. But getting on it as quick as possible is, is imperative and our teachers know that. And so introduce Stacy. I know she had been here with Dr. Weigel to present as well. But Stacy's done a phenomenal job with leading our team in the K six realm, working with five different schools, working with our interventionists. We regularly meet with principals and assistant principals and coming up with ways to get as many kids as possible. And there isn't enough time in a day on a regular school year. And so, but Stacy's done a great job and she's going to give you a little insight as to what she's working on with her team.
Thank you very much. And it's late and I'm sorry, we're at the end. This is, it is important. And, and why it's important is you invested a lot of money into hiring people to make an impact. And what I need you to know is that, that there, an impact is being made. There's significant gaps and growth to be made, but it's happening. I just had this talk with Jason about this, that we are seeing it and I just want to see more. So we've got an interventionist at each of the elementary schools and the intermediate school. They started pulling students immediately and meeting with them, push in, pull out, different models that have worked. We used data from last year to begin, to start day one with working with students. We used further data that we got throughout the year to continue to tweak that. You mentioned something about how did we end up here at a high school with so many students? And if you look at that 1% of, of who is tier three, is 1 to 5%, that would have been my first grade classroom, one student in my class. And yes, I would have been worried about that student and I would have invested in that student and maybe the student just still didn't keep up. Now we've got in sixth grade at Daniel Morgan, 14 of those students. And so that was everybody's one kid that is struggling in math this year. Horrifically struggling, struggling in math. So it's not that everybody just threw up their hands and ignored it. It's, we've been investing, but are we doing the right thing? And maybe not. So this allows us to say, we're making data-driven decisions, not, I think there's something wrong there. Maybe what I'm doing is okay. So by using this framework, we can say, we have data to determine who is in need. We can drill down to say specifically what is the issue? We have manpower to work on that skill. It's not, it's not a box or a program. There are things that we're using that are helping to support teachers and interventionists with the interventions. But what we're using is research and evidence-based practices, which are explicit instruction and vocabulary integration and teacher modeling and guided and independent practice that is relevant and specific to the needs at hand in very small groups. And we're monitoring that progress to make sure, is it working? And if it's not, we're making a change today. As you said, not at the end of the year, not in August, we say, now what do we do? But that we're making those changes real time. So that is what is happening. Jake, how do I go forward? Okay. We are working with about 160 students, K six. In between the teachers working with students, we felt it was imperative that, that as we build this program in our division, that we needed to make sure that we have created common language and processes and policies and procedures that, that we're all going to be on board with. So part of this is we meet every other week as a team so that we can build this and also embed it with professional development. So all of the interventionists are receiving a significant amount of professional development that's not only helping them, but some of that is turnaround professional development that they're also sharing at the school level. Am I not doing it right, Jake? Oh, okay, I went too far. Okay. Maybe? Okay. As I said, we're working with 160 kids. And so you've got examples here of, this is a teacher who's working with three of a max of four students at a time, use of manipulative, using concrete representational abstract processes to go through. Our teachers are making sure that if we say, this is what the deficit is, what are the precursor skills that are needed? And that's what we're teaching. There's parent communication, there's teacher communication, student empowerment. We have kids that are goal setting. They know what they need to do to help on their end to contribute to this. And so we're working, when we look at that whole teamwork, we're working collaboratively. And that's a summary. What questions do you have? K six, and then we'll turn it over to seven twelve.
Thank you. Any questions for Stacy?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just real quick, as like we mentioned earlier, as Jake mentioned, like in third grade, there's that foundational learning, everybody's going to get a PALS test. And, and, you know, we're going to have pullout with the Title I teacher to address it. That's been going on for my whole career. But secondary is a little different. And a strange mindset occurs. The third grade teacher will say, they'll, they'll say things like, he needs decoding, fluency, comprehension. Secondary, when we get to ninth grade, all of a sudden it's about grades and they're not doing their work and they're not coming to school. So it's really, the, the high school teacher sometimes see the symptoms of students who haven't gone to school regularly or didn't have, weren't staying on, on grade level. So we say things like, they just don't do their work and they're failing my class, they don't study. So our approach at the secondary level is we're digging a little deeper. That's right, they're failing. They didn't pass their SOL. They don't, probably not doing their work because it's so difficult because of the level of the content and their reading ability. So we're actually digging down, and Jackie will tell you in a minute, of, we need to know what their reading level is. And we need to find time in the day to address, to, to improve their comprehension. So they can, you know, we used to have approached reading in the content area, still, still should have it. But, you know, if I'm a sixth grade reading level, how can I tackle the instruction in a world history class content-wise? And we need our teachers to understand, you're a content specialist and you're given high school level assignments, but students are struggling because we, we need to reach down and give them some skills that are just missing and becoming a barrier for success. I'd like to introduce my friend, Jackie Tan, who's, has a lot of expertise in PBIS, MTSS. We stole her from Lynchburg and she's just doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. So what we provided to you all is basically in the first column, we have our data set points that we look at. So those data points kind of guide us into how to support the whole student. Because as Mr. Ray had mentioned, oftentimes in order to drill down into those reading deficits or math deficits, these students are preoccupied with, I want to pass this class. So we have to address those pressing issues in order for them to even want to attempt the problem solving and to utilize the cognitive side of their brains. So we look at all of these data points and then we have some interventions and supports in place that we can match with the student based on what we see or perceive as the most pressing need. Again, you can see it's everything from grades to attendance, looking at referral data. Because all of those things play into matching the student with the appropriate support. Sometimes the academic interventions look different than the behavioral interventions or interventions geared around improving their social, emotional learning outcomes. So we have to be very broad and diverse and look at the whole child. So that large number you see at the very end is the number of students who have participated across supports. So they may be represented two to three times. Twilight School is after-school intervention, academic coaching is during the day. The Student Success Room that we just recently opened up is going to be, well, at the middle school, they've been open. So they've been supporting students. And so essentially that, that's what that number represents. So at the high school, we use similar data points. And then also the interventions and supports are pretty much duplicate. And we're using the same model at both schools. Because again, in secondary, we really have to look at the whole child's needs first before we can drill down into those specific skill sets. Because their minds aren't really focused on, I need to close this gap around comprehension. It's more so like, help me get out of this F-zone for multiple classes. So again, 190. That number's a little more accurate. So not as many duplicates and triplets in the high school. Because oftentimes they can't come to Twilight School, they might be going to a job after school. So the success center was our way of trying to capture kids while they were at school. We have a team that functions as a problem-solving hub. So we, as a team, decide what supports exist, what supports can we put in place? And then monitor the data across interventions and supports, which ones are effective, which ones are not showing effectiveness? Do we need to modify, delete, add to? So we talk about a lot of school-wide efforts. And then we rely on the PLCs and the teacher referrals to tell us who needs these supports. This is the Student Success Room at Daniel Morgan. So they've been up and running for about a month. So students come and go as needed to get support around missing assignments, additional help, and ultimately improving their grades. So they could be in and out within a week's time. If they need two to three weeks, they are also offered that support as long as they need it. Another style of support is to work with an interventionist directly. Because of the number of students at the middle school and the high school, the interventionists are reserved for students who have significant needs around reading or math deficits as well as organization, particularly at the high school. Because if they don't have those organizational skills, they are pretty much floundering across classes. So that goes on at both the middle school and the high school. We have Chris Coughlin here, working with students in a more interactive manner. And then Jen often, Jen Colbert often works with students in small groups or one-on-one supports. And the last thing I wanted to share with you all are some quotes from teachers and staff. Just letting you know that we are using professional development to educate the staff on what MTSS is, because we can hear all these acronyms, MTSS, RTI, PBIS, VTSS. We just want to make sure that we send a message that it's not one more thing. We are organizing and creating an infrastructure to support students. And we can use a lot of the resources that we currently have. Are there any questions?
Hold up the floor for any questions or comments for Stacy. Dr. Pierce, Ms. Holmes, Ms. Holman?
It's very helpful to see all of this, how it fits together as a whole, how it uses things that we're already doing. I'm excited for seeing what we have next year. The students that have improved their performance and they can move down on that pyramid, being able to be empowered with, you know, catching up in that area so that they feel more empowered to do the work on their own and that feel like they can do it, knowing that your team is there. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I just have one question or maybe a comment when I, you were talking about just really looking at the student holistically and working with, especially high school students. I guess it's pretty interesting to kind of think about how you change their priorities in terms of they're, they're looking at their semester, they're looking at their semester grade, they have a sense of urgency, I need to fix this. And so you specifically said they're not necessarily interested in those gaps and how to kind of mitigate it and fill them. What are you guys doing to, to kind of help those students change the way that they see it so that we can work on and prioritize what's important? And that's filling those gaps and making up those gaps so then they don't have to be, you know, like, you know, at the last minute, oh, how can I get, can I do extra credit, whatever it is? So I'm just curious about that because that takes a skill set.
Right. That's a great question.
That's necessarily black and white.
And we were, in preparing for this, we were talking about, we didn't want the board to think like, you know, you're called down, you're called down for intervention and you're just like, okay, I can't wait to get to work, not my work, you know, not reading. Our interventionists have said that when they come down, it's social, emotional first. Like these kids have come down saying, I'm overwhelmed, I don't know what to do first. So there's a lot of mindset changing, calm down, let's do one step at a time. You tell me how you organize. Because if you don't do that, you're, you know, just be, you know, just get back to work, get this, get started. So we, the kids have really needed some reflection on how they've approached work and being able to express their exhaustion and frustration with managing the grades over the last couple of years. So we're, like I said, that and, and taking that cool approach. So we're, like I said, that and, and taking that dual approach, both academic and their social emotional needs.
Thank you for explaining that. I would imagine that that would also help to kind of decrease some of the negative behaviors that can, you know, be present when students are frustrated about their grade and not sure what to do. So I think that's, I think that's pretty.
There was this student who told the interventionist, she said, "It's really hard coming up," but he said, "I feel safe here." So the place he was at was, "I feel safe coming down here and talking to you." So we're just taking baby steps, and, you know, she said, "Well, maybe we can shore up one of his grades."
Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Yeah, just one quick. It's been a joy to watch this team work together. And Jackie, good job. We appreciate you coming up from Lynchburg. And the whole team has done a great job, so thank you.
Thank you all so much.
That moves us to, we're still on, I believe, to our II BBA review.
Good evening. Give you, change gears here a little bit and give you a little bit, a little dose of policy before we get out of here. Be pretty brief, no slide duck tonight. Just going to talk at you here just for just a couple of minutes and then give you a chance to, some questions. So tonight I'm going to review policy II BEA, more commonly known to you as the acceptable use policy or the AUP that we refer to it. It's been around for, I was surprised, about 20 years is when we adopted it. So many years of revisions. It does an, every two-year revision process. The, the policy as it stands now, it's about seven or eight pages. It does not have a regulation associated with it, but it does have a lot of content that lends itself to easily be translated into a regula, regulation. As you're aware, VSBA has been working over the, much more, the last year or so to remove a lot of the reference to regulations from policies. It's part of the process you've been working through with Brian on a regular basis with a lot of policy cleanup. As part of the VSBA's review process, going back to June of '21, they removed the policy, the, the regulation references out of II BEA as part of their recommendations, amongst some other minor changes that they made. So just a little backstory there to kind of bring you up to speed. This evening I'm here because I think that it's really an appropriate time for us to consider adopting the VSBA version of, of the acceptable use policy and adopting what they're requesting now in the pol, in their version of the policy as the technology use guidelines, which essentially is where all the content that we have that could become regulation would live. So a little backstory there. Rather than provide you like a redline version of the policy as it stands now, where I basically would have struck through everything, what I've done is I've provided two attachments and, in the agenda. One of them is the VSBA version of the policy. The second one is a draft of technology use guidelines. You can see it now really is the meat of a lot of the examples and the, the do's and don't do's and recommendations that lives now in the existing policy in addition to a lot of cleanup, organization, a little greater detail. So while I realize it's not on the agenda tonight as an action item, it's on here for a report. But what I'm proposing is that we use this opportunity and the, and now that we're at our two-year review of the policy, as a chance to go ahead and open up discussion or whatever you may have. But my recommendation personally is that we go ahead and use this opportunity to go ahead and adopt the VSBA version of the policy and officially adopt the technology use guidelines. And over the course of the next couple of weeks, you take the opportunity to, to review these. Send me any questions you might have. And then potentially, this ends up as a consent item on a future board meeting or as a future action item. And be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Before we, I just want to make sure that everyone has had an opportunity to read the attachments here so that we are asking appropriate questions that you can answer tonight. Any questions or comments for Mrs. McBrady? Mrs. Trubin?
Thank you for bringing this to us, Erin. One of the questions I had was probably a little bit more general in this space, but we have all these duties and obligations, right? And we're supposed to try to prevent this and limit this. And I know that a lot of that, in IT's hands, from my perspective, is really driven by your vendors, right? Of like, how up to date is their filtering? And are they, how, how good a job are they doing so that in turn we're doing it? Do we have a mechanism in place for our kids to help share back with the school division when, hey, they, they go to a website that looks safe, but something pops up that's inappropriate? Like, what do they do with that, if anything? Or is there anything there we can bolster? Because I, I see our kids as the front line of, unfortunately, right? Of being ahead of a lot of that before our vendors may even, it may even come to their attention.
Yeah, absolutely. So that is referenced in these guidelines in here. There's a statement that particularly talks about that. And just in practice, what we do now is, and this happens regularly, we get, we get lots of requests, either blocker or whitelist sites. Typically, a student would either tell a teacher and the teacher will submit a ticket through the help desk. And that's the way we track it now, or through an email occasionally. But we do, we do regularly get those types of requests.
Even, even from students? I know from teachers we do a lot.
Yeah, not, not as many from, not as many from students, but yes, we do get them from students. So they, they tend to traditionally come through the eye of the teacher once they reach us. But we do get them reported from students to teachers.
Thank you.
I have a question. So is this kind of along the same vein? But is it possible that a system could be set up that students have access to a way where they can ask for a site to be whitelisted? Is that something we can explore in the future?
Yeah, yeah, certainly. I believe that you could do that now through creating a help desk ticket right through the website. I believe it's going to allow you to log in and do that. I can verify that and just confirm for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. McBrady?
I didn't want you to feel lonely by my not saying anything. I do appreciate the reduction in size.
Thank you, Ms. Holman.
Thank you, Ms. McBrady. We'll be looking forward to seeing this again soon.
All right, that moves us to, that moves us to, I did the item number six. And just, just a reminder that these are action items for this evening. Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Good evening. As I mentioned at the last work session, a couple of weeks ago, that we need to transfer our current central administrative offices or our CAO to the city so they can start marketing the property for sale. Our legal team has prepared a resolution that puts forth all the legalese to allow that transfer to happen while allowing our, our staff and our administrative staff to remain in the building until we move into our new building on Kent Street later this year. The resolution, upon your approval, will take effect immediately. And by adopting it, will allow the board chair to execute it. Once this is completed, our legal team will provide us with a leaseback MOU or memorandum of understanding to be executed with the city so that we can stay in the building legally as a tenant. And so I'll be glad to address any questions you might have about the resolution. But I'm not a lawyer. I'm an ops guy, so there's a lot of, you know, two wits and therefore, therefore's in there. And so I'll try and do my best. But if you have any questions, based on the relationship we have with our legal team, I would recommend that the board approve the resolution as presented. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Smith?
I see you can.
You get the questions. So I noticed that we have no numbers in here, other than, you know, fee and property. Are the, the financial component of this is memorialized in another document. That's correct?
That is correct, yes. We will receive money from the city based on, up to, or at least, at least a million and a half dollars of, after this able to build it.
Okay.
That is correct.
That's it?
Yep.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Smith? I remember this is an action item this evening.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Holman. We have a second by Dr. Pierce Gonzalez. All in favor? Any opposed? Say the same? Any discussion? This motion passes. Thank you. I think you're up for the next one as well.
Yes. For the next action item, I have a simple easement that, that has been requested of the school board. I provided a photograph late today in your, in your package showing you the strip of land that the school board owns on Hanley Boulevard. I, I don't know the history of why we own it, but it is, it does separate two properties. I think it's, was kept as access to the tennis courts, because it does go from Hanley Boulevard all the way to the tennis courts. But between those two buildings, between those two homes where we own that property, the home on the left or at 312 Hanley Boulevard is requesting that Washington Gas install gas in their home. They are both new residents. And so the way for them to get gas to their home is to tap into the line that's on the property that faces Stewart Avenue, or Stewart Street. And so they would need an access, they would need to allow Washington Gas to, to dig a, a line, a 10-foot swath where they would lay a pipe to come from the back of that house that faces Stewart to the 312 Hanley Avenue property. So we need to provide the easement or grant the easement to Washington Gas. Now that easement will allow them to get in there, put, place the pipe, make any repairs to the property. And then also, in the future, it grants them access to come back if there is a problem with the pipe and fix it or work in that, in that space. I've worked with the legal team again on this resolution to allow the easement. And he has provided that in this, in this document. So the resolution granting this easement has been prepared by the legal team. And the resolution allows the board chair to exec, execute the easement as well as the agreement with Washington Gas. We have no issues with this easement. Again, we don't even use the land. We just own it. And the, the homeowners of those two homes actually take care of that property. They have, they actually have a hedge that goes down, down that property line. And so they take care of it on a, on, on an annual basis. We've never done anything with that little strip of land. But it is, but it is owned by the school board. And so in order for them to get that pipe across, they do need access. Are there, are there any questions about that?
This is, this was a strange one. Just that little piece of land, and you say you don't even know the history behind it. Two, kind of two questions. If in the future, 20 years from now, the ownership of these properties changes hands, is this easement legally binding? So if something happens to that pipe and it needs to be repaired, could a homeowner come to the school system and say, "Well, it's your land. You need to repair it." You know what I mean?
Uh, no, I believe that the easement that we, that we, that we provide to Washington, Washington Gas will own the pipe. We do, we would not own the pipe. Washington Gas just has the right to come on the property and use it.
And any future repairs would not be overtaken upon the school system?
No, 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 not at all.
And then, it seems nonsensical that the school system owns, I mean, is that?
It does. It's probably, would require some homework on my part to go and find out why that land exists and why the school board owns it.
I just wonder if, if those property owners would want to purchase that from the school system? If we don't maintain it, we don't use it, it's, it's not really, I mean, if you think about what the property is of the young high school, it's across the street.
It is, yeah.
So I just wonder if that could be a $10,000 negotiation? I mean, I'm just, that's just an arbitrary, you know?
Right, right.
Just to get it off of, off of our plate?
Well, that, you know, if the board wants me to investigate that, I certainly would, would, could approach the, the homeowners.
Yeah, just curious, I guess.
Yep. I could do that. I could approach them and ask them if they'd be interested.
But similar to the CAO, if we say we don't want it, doesn't it go back to the city?
The property? Oh, that's a good question. Yeah, that's probably, that's actually a good point, yeah. We're, we're, I mean, we can, we can actually sell property according to our legal team. We can sell property with the permission of city council. But yes, whenever we generally do not use real property or we no longer have a use for real property, we turn it back over to the city. But it's just always been owned by the school board.
I said, we put a shuffleboard.
It literally is like a 10-foot swath of land, yeah.
You can rent it out for alcohol laws.
There you go.
That's true.
Thanks, Ed. One thing that is really fascinating is that this is actually owned by the school board, not the Hanley Trust. So I, I am very interested how that came to be. Because most of the property up there is owned by the Hanley Trust, not the school board. Like, we're sure, we're the owner of the record here, right? I mean, it looks like this.
No, no, according to, yeah, what the research that the, that the lawyer did, it's, it's owned by us, yeah.
It's not. It looks like us, but that's, it tells me there's a story there, something else. But also, didn't we have some flooding issues back there behind 809?
We did. We got those fixed.
And that's, is this past where the flooding issues were?
No, so the flooding issues are right about where those lines I drew in the picture, the, the ones that are more towards the top of the page. Right about in that area is where the flooding actually started. And then it flowed into the yard of that house on the corner there that, they have that empty lot next to them. It filled that up like a swimming pool. That, that, that lot is sunk down below their house. And so whenever the water would come down off the tennis courts and come out of that, off of our parking lot, it would pop, the water would come up out of, they have a drain right there in the corner of our property line, and it would fill up their, the side of their yard. But we got that fixed.
We haven't had problems there in years, though.
We, no, we haven't, yeah. We fixed that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, wouldn't want you to go down a rabbit hole chasing it down, but it would be really interesting to know.
Yeah, I could ask.
Why that's not owned by the Hanley Trust.
Okay, I see.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Smith? Just keep in mind, this is an action item for this evening.
No further questions, but would like to make a motion to approve the Washington Gas easement. Resolution as presented and authorize board chair to execute the agreement with Washington Gas.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Holman. A second by Dr. Pierce Gonzalez. All in favor? Any opposed? Any discussion?
I'm going to miss Mrs. Trubin's institutional knowledge.
All right, thank you. So that concludes our, public portion of our meeting this evening.
Pursuant to section 2.2, statute 3711a1 of the Code of Virginia, motion that the board convene in closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters including prospective candidates for employment and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, emotional, job, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, employees, or employees specifically, candidates for instructional slash licensed positions for the remainder of the school year, substitute teachers, and support staff coaching stipends, and regulations, resignations as listed for school board review.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Holman. Second by Ms. Trubin. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right.